All right, I think we're good, but just give me just one second to get those messages up.
Thank you, Matt. While we wait for Matt to get that going, just to reiterate, we had five written public comments, three voicemail, and no one from the public requested access to this meeting to give live testimony.
Michelle, I need to have Matt confirm that he was able to capture the motion for the minutes. If not, we'll repeat it.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah, let's repeat it because I don't think it was captured.
All right. When you're ready, you let us know. We'll have Counselor Demott repeat it.
Yeah, go ahead. It's good now.
Right. Counselor Demott, if you would repeat your motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the City Council approve the minutes of the October 12th, 2020 meeting as presented.
Counselor Smith?
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion is carried. For the record, there were no presentations. We are into public comment as defined by the city clerk. There were five emails that had been provided to council and is posted. We are prepared to hear the voice recordings, three individuals. Mr. Williams, when you're ready, please play those three. Okay, Matt, go ahead and play them when you're ready.
Hi, my name is Tracy Reefer. I just wanted to touch base with all of you regarding the tax and how it will affect the store that I supervise there on Federal in Westminster. I do believe if we go forward and you guys proceed with this, all you're going to do is push most of our customers across the city line to purchase, you know, they'll just turn around, leave there. What's to stop them from driving over to Arvada where the taxes are lower, virtually anywhere else? That's just what they have to do. You know how much overlap we have in these cities and how close it becomes. So they'll just choose to spend their money outside of Westminster. I'm not sure that'll be a good idea for any of the local businesses. Just wanted to express my opinion and thank you for the opportunity to do so. Bye.
Hello, my name is Kendra Jasmine. I work and live in the city of Westminster. I work for Smoker Friendly and I was calling about the tax hike that you are doing in Westminster. If you go and do that, that will make my customers go away to a different city like Arvada, Northland, Thornton, Federal Heights, and shop for their cigarettes there. Also, that will also put my job in jeopardy because of losing sales in my store. I would appreciate if you please did not make this tax hike. It will be detrimental to my store that I manage and also to my livelihood as a store manager of a smoking retail store. I appreciate you listening to me and I hope you have a great evening and thank you so much.
Good morning. This submission is for tonight's City Council meeting. My name is Brian Foytik. That's F as in Frank, OJ, T as in Thomas, I K. Good evening. My name is Brian Foytik. I live in Denver and testify today on behalf of the National Association of Tobacco Outlets, a retail trade association representing over 60,000 stores, including 17 in Westminster. I testify today in opposition to Counselors Bill Number 32 regarding a proposed amendment to the Westminster Municipal Code eliminating the sales and use tax exemption for cigarettes for the following reasons. This proposal would increase the tax on a pack of cigarettes by 22 cents or increase the tax on a carton of cigarettes by $2.20. First, the current emergency caused by the global pandemic will be magnified by additional taxes on cigarettes. Our NATO members have experienced losses of 45% in gasoline sales and 20% or more reductions in grocery, snack, beverage, and tobacco product sales. These numbers are significant because gas stations and convenience stores, most of our Westminster retail numbers, rely on tobacco product sales to adults 21 and over for about 36% of in-store sales. Of the 17 NATO member stores in Westminster, 15 of them, or 88%, were designated by the Colorado Governor and the US Department of Homeland Security as essential businesses, critical to the fundamental infrastructure of the nation during this pandemic. Employees at these stores were deemed essential workers and these businesses experienced the loss cited above because of changed consumer behavior in response to the pandemic. People are driving less because they are working from home and they're shopping online. Limiting the sales and use tax exemption for cigarettes would increase prices in Westminster relative to all its neighbors. Customers will purchase products online or in an adjacent city where they will not only buy cigarettes, but ancillary products like gasoline, food, and beverages and grocery items outside Westminster, too. These shopping alternatives with pricing advantages will be magnified if Prop EE is approved by the voters. Most likely result will be losses far greater than the current combined 65% declines in gasoline and other product sales that retailers have faced during the pandemic and shutdown. This is not the time to burden local retailers further than the pandemic has already done. This tax increase will be regressive, both severely impacting residents who can least afford it and potentially threatening the city's revenue sharing from the state cigarette tax. While I know the legal issue related to the cigarette tax revenue sharing from the state is addressed in the staff memorandum, it appears that whether Westminster will continue to receive its share after increasing taxes could be subject to litigation, legal expenses, and lost revenues. For the above reason, on behalf of our Westminster NATO members, we respectfully oppose this proposed new tax and request that you do the same. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions or provide further information. You may contact me at B R I A N F O J T I K at NATO Central dot org. Thank you very much.
That concludes all of the voicemails that we have received, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, Item Six is the Report of City Officials. Mr. Tripp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief report tonight. I want to focus this evening on, you know, something that is happening in our community and throughout the world, a series of things that are causing a lot of pain. And I want to recognize the city staff for their response to all the things that have happened here in the past several months, in particular, right now, between the fire evacuations, the COVID epidemic, and the illness and death that are from that, and the consequential impacts to our economy, they've been all severe. This last weekend, in the course of a matter, a matter of a few hours, city staff prepared for fire evacuees at City Park Recreation Center. 230 families in Westminster are being served right now at the Doubletree. We have members of our employee community that have homes in the mountains that are impacted, had to immediately take precautions, and they have family members that have moved down from the mountains to live with them. We are now feeding 600-plus families, and I know many of you helped participate in this Market Night program that's held on Wednesday night, but we've, we see, we are feeding 600-plus families, about 25 children and adults every Wednesday evening. We are feeding 100 seniors daily through the Restaurant Retirement Food Security Program. I just want to recognize all those folks that have participated. We've sent our public safety folks to assist from the fire, from our fire department during these fires and staff in many, many departments have done extraordinary work in providing for protection and support for not only our community but regionally as well. So I want to thank those folks and I want to thank you, council, for your support of our workforce as we endeavor to help people get through these very difficult times. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Tripp. Let me turn now to the council to see if there are any comments from the council members. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, City Manager Tripp, for recognizing our staff and those that are on staff that have family members that are in need of our services. And to the Red Cross and all of our first responders that are dealing with the fires across our state, it's heartbreaking. I know I have family members myself that are taking up on our services. So I very much appreciate everything that our first responders and city staff are doing. The other reminders I wanted to make are remember to get ballots in. Get your vote counted. Your vote is your voice. To mail in, I believe today was the last day to mail in, but we do have drop boxes across the city for you to drop off your ballots. And the other reminder I would like to provide is for boards and commissions, the last day to apply, and you can do that online, is November 5th. So boards and commissions are very essential to council in helping to guide our decisions through projects that may come to the city and other vital decisions that we make as a body. So they're very critical for our community to be a part of. So I would encourage everyone and all to apply to our boards and commissions. Again, deadline is November 5th. Thank you very much.
Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, we had our Rocky Flats stewardship council meeting that we hold quarterly. We actually do two of them back-to-back in the fourth quarter. And we talked about, we talk about the groundwater, we talk about the soil and changes that may be occurring. We look at some of the land that's shifting in cracks and sizes and we talk about the vegetation and the animals that are out there living. And we talked a lot about the refuge and people walking across the refuge. So some of the highlights were that they expect in the year 2020 to have 40,000 people walk across Rocky Flats on one of the trails, the North or the South Trail. That is a startling number of people and it is up from 14,000 last year. They said that they're not all different people. Sometimes it's the same person who comes back to visit multiple times. They said also that the groundwater, one of the groundwater tests was a little high. So what they'll do is they'll retest it here in the next month to see if it goes back down because often when our weather changes, we get more frequent storms or we dry out a little bit, it can affect that water quality. So they'll retest it and they'll keep us posted on how that measurement comes back. And then we also voted to have two new groups join, the Rocky Flats group. They actually weren't new. They were incumbents. They were up for reelection. And so we voted to have the Rocky Mountain Cold War Museum have a representation on the council and also Kim Griffiths from the Candellas, both very close to Rocky Flats, the Rocky Mountain, I'm sorry, the Rocky Flats Cold War Museum group has been a member of the Rocky Flats stewardship council for a number of years. This will be their, I believe, their third term. And they, they bring with them a great deal of experience, history to it, and help us understand where it's been and, and the effects that have happened in the past. And then Kim Griffiths from the Candellas meets with residents from the Candellas. The Candellas, you might know, is very close to Rocky Flats, so it's really good to have a community representative on the council who can really address the concerns of the residents that are truly impacted and live so close to Rocky Flats. Just a reminder that Rocky Flats stewardship council meetings are always open to the public and our next meeting will be February 1st, and you can access that meeting by logging on to their website. And then also I wanted to thank the chamber, the Westminster Chamber. Last week, they had a discussion with the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport, people who, who are in charge, and it was a very interesting conversation. It was good to see residents on the call, asking good questions, and I appreciated the information that was shared. Also, the water, we're doing water rate meetings workshops. We had one last Tuesday, a really great workshop, but we have one coming up and I would invite the public. These are open to the public. Please join us. Please be a part of this conversation. The next one is Thursday, November 5th at 6:00 PM. Want to wish everyone a happy and safe Halloween. I know it's going to look different this year, but still try to enjoy it and have a good time. Be safe. And then finally, thank you, Counselor Smith, for mentioning the vote. A passion of mine is, is getting the vote out and so just want to encourage people to vote. But please remember that you can only put your ballot in a ballot box and it is important that if you live on the Adams side, you drop it in an Adams County ballot box if you can. It will still get there if it goes into a Jeffco ballot box, but it is easier to track and it will get there faster if you drop it in an Adams County ballot box. And the same for Jeffco. So for Jeffco residents, please know that the ballot box at City Hall is in Adams County. So you need to drop your ballot at City Hall or someplace on the Jeffco side. So please be conscious of where you are putting those ballots. Don't just drop them anywhere. So those are my messages for the week. Thank you. Have a great weekend. Let's get started on this meeting.
Counselor Vols?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say a few positive comments. You know, oftentimes we get some negativity around different elements of what we do here in council, but I want to just compliment some of my colleagues and be positive tonight on, on a few things. You know, we've, we've got wildfires that were, were going all over the state and I want to thank our staff who worked very hard to make sure people suffering and people in need, and it had to be a lot of hard work and a lot of organization to pull it off. We had one of the emergency shelters right here in Westminster. So thank you to our city staff for all of their hard work. And then on COVID-19, I, you know, we've seen a tremendous spike in the numbers and it's, it's not the numbers we want to see. And I want to thank my colleagues, all of us on council, for the tremendous effort we put into it and all of you put into it. And I especially want to thank the mayor and all of the meetings he attends. As many as we go to, he goes to many more with school superintendents, presidents of hospitals that serve our area, mayors in our region, and on and on and on. So and then he shares that with us and it allows us to be better council members and more informed. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, for what you do. And then I also, I was at a meeting with a lot of my colleagues on Friday evening and it was about the COVID spike and, and the tremendous impact it's having in our community and maybe next steps. And I was really impressed with our city staff. Don Tripp was on the call and Larry Dorr and some of our senior staff and some of my colleagues at council to get this news. And it wasn't good news, but I was impressed with the way our city is considered a leader in the region. So more than once, two or three times, our city manager was called out to kind of report on what we're doing. It turns out City of Westminster is an innovator. We're a leader in the region and doing some stuff that other people are trying to do as well and find out if we do it and how they could do what we're doing. And I know Federal Heights City Manager even said that. She said, well, we look to Westminster and we try to do, duplicate what they're working on there. So I was very impressed and proud of our city and I know there's a tremendous amount of COVID-19 fatigue and I, we, I think we're all experiencing that, but I just wanted to say a few positive words about all the efforts from our staff and Max Kirschbaum and his team with the, the weekly reports. And this is just a tremendous effort and we've been doing it since March. So I just wanted to say a few positive words in that way. And, and also thank our residents for hanging in there and being patient and wearing their masks, washing their hands, social distancing, and let's please keep doing that. So thank you all, and those are just the, the comments I had tonight. So thank you.
Mayor Protim, slide?
Oh, wait, I had one more. I'm sorry. I had one more that I, I wanted to say and I, I forgot. I, I recently had a chance to see our mayor Protim lead a statewide group. So the Colorado Municipal League, which works with cities and towns throughout our entire state, represents us and represents the issues that we want to see that make our state better and help cities and towns throughout our state. Our mayor Protim currently serves as chair of that committee. So I, I just saw that happen last week and I just want to say congratulations and it makes me proud. So keep up the good work, Mayor Protim. Thank you.
Mayor Protim, would you like to follow that one?
Yeah, thank you. That was a nice, warm, fuzzy to, to start my comments. And I do want to first start by recognizing that this has been a hard, not just week for Colorado, but month between just typical COVID-19, the forest fires, Adams 12, just for six through 12, going back to remote learning, the, the difficulty that our businesses have had at having to adapt and innovate and then constantly having the landscape change is, is taxing and tiring for the community. And I am so appreciative of the efforts of my colleagues in, in really trying to help be stewards of the community during this period of time. So I am appreciative that we have our city park as an emergency shelter. I am appreciative of the market night and I did not realize or remember that we were doing 600 families a night. That's a huge number. So I, I just want to acknowledge the pain in the community and let you know you're not alone. There is an organization that wants to help meet these challenges and I know we're stronger together. Some of my colleagues have talked a lot about what I was, I was planning on talking about. I just want to remind us, it's our national elections. And regardless of who you vote for, that is a right that is not given freely, but is hard fought. People have made the ultimate sacrifice to protect that right. And I would encourage all of you to do your civic duty and vote regardless of who you're voting for. And, and at this point, I agree, you can't, I, I believe today was the last day you could mail in a ballot in time. So ballot boxes are versions that are left. You know, we celebrate not just the election, but the tradition, the tradition of the peaceful transfer of power. That's something that is really a hallmark of our democracy and something I'm so proud of that we accept and value the voice of our residents and our community members. And it's something that I cherish and honor as well. Finally, I want to say happy Halloween. My kids' absolute favorite holiday is going to be this Saturday and it's going to look different. And regardless of how you choose to celebrate, please bear in mind the new public health order and make sure you're doing it safely and try to stay festive. There's a lot of different creative and innovative ways that you can celebrate the holiday, still have fun, and limit exposure. But thank you for everyone who made comments for tonight. I'm going to be addressing some of those at that agenda item. Thank you so much.
Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to celebrate the greatness of our city and those people who have stepped up. Thank you, City Manager Tripp, for recognizing the staff that really pulled together some great things this weekend to help those from the fire. That's, that's the great thing about our city. We have incredible people, unique neighborhoods, and some things that, that make our city diverse is the fact that we have two counties, multiple school districts, all kinds of overlapping but integrated groups that work together to make our, our city shine. And, and I look forward to, you know, seeing how, that we can make sure that we can protect that uniqueness, especially in relation to COVID issues, too. So on a, on a positive business note, always pushing a deal, never turn down a burger. This Wednesday, 5280 Burger Bar on behalf of the Westminster Burn Fund, which is a fund that helps our residents who have a fire at their residence that, that they can get a check, get some money to them right away. And so everybody knows that working nonprofits is kind of hard to raise money right now, but 5280 Burger Bar in Bradburn will be donating 20% of their proceeds. Call in, get a takeout order. You can find the advertisement on Facebook and, and many other places on Nextdoor. And that is lunch and dinner. So no excuses on that one. The weather should be a lot better to get around that day and we appreciate local businesses contributing to our community. So, thank you.
Any other council comments? I'm seeing none. Let's move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a set of routine matters debacted on with a single motion. We only have one item on the consent agenda tonight and that item is the financial report for September. Ms. Scully, Counselor Scully, if you would, please?
I move that the City Council adopt the consent agenda, Items 8A through 8D.
Counselor Vols? I'm sorry, Counselor Seymour?
A second.
I have a motion in a second for the Item 8A. Is there any discussion on this item before we move on to the roll call vote? I'm seeing none. Ms. Parker, Item 8A, if you would, please, roll call vote.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Mayor Protim sites?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
And Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Right. Thank you, council. Moving on to Item Nine, appointments and resignations. We have none tonight. Moving on to Item 10. Tonight, we will open up the public hearing for any comments that we have received in regards to the proposed 2021 budget. Ms. Parker, do we have any comments or anyone who wishes to comment tonight on the budget?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Clerk's office was not contacted by any member of the public via email, voicemail, or to give live testimony on this item.
Okay. Well, seeing that we have no one who wishes to comment from the public, then I will close the public hearing and we'll move on to the next item. This is Item 10B1. It's a public hearing on a preliminary development plan for the Mission Hills Silo Commercial Subdivision. I will at this time turn this over to staff to see what comments they have. Mr. Tripp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protim, members of City Council. Stephanie Ashman from our Community Development Department has been the leader on this particular project and I believe she will lead this off and then introduce others who will participate this evening. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Just want to be sure that you can hear me. Yes, thank you very much. So yes, my name is Stephanie Ashman, Senior Planner in the City's Planning Division. I will be presenting to you this evening the Fifth Amended Preliminary Development Plan. I'll refer to as PDP further on into my presentation for Mission Hill Silo Commercial Subdivision. I should mention this evening that Rita McConnell, the Planning Manager, and John McConnell, the Principal Planner, are in attendance this evening as well and can provide input when needed. The property owner is requesting a recommendation of approval to the Fifth Amended PDP for the expansion and clarification of the list of proposed uses for lots 6A, 5R, and 2. So next slide, please. Oh, it doesn't look like my presentation's up yet. Matt, can you get my presentation up, please? Thank you very much. Okay, and let's go ahead and go to the next slide, please. Great, thank you. So the property is a traditional retail commercial subdivision located on the northwest corner of West 88th Avenue and Wadsworth Parkway, as shown here in the red. The property is generally surrounded by other commercial land uses. To the east is the Brookhill Commercial Subdivision with major retail anchors such as Home Depot and Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. To the north is Silo Business Park. To the south is Stanley Lake Shops. And finally, to the west of the property are single-family And finally, to the west of the property are single-family homes and townhomes. Next slide, please. As part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, and public notices mailed, posted, and published in the Westminster window are hereby entered into the public record at this time. Next slide, please. So I will now introduce the standards of reviewing PDPs. Section 11514 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 10 standards that are to be the basis of evaluation and approval for PDP amendments. Staff finds the PDP application generally meets these standards as outlined in the agenda memo. The first four standards are that the PDP is in conformance with applicable codes, follows appropriate planning principles, identifies any exceptions sought, and that the PDP is compatible with the surrounding development. By way of example, the proposed amendment is in conformance with the Retail Commercial Comprehensive Land Use Designation. The singular exception being sought for from the code is to remove the 30% taproom area maximum entirely from the brewery definition identified in Section 1121 of the Westminster Municipal Code. This request is based on the commercial location of the proposed neighborhood brewery use and that the site is currently overparked for for all of the existing and proposed uses by 130 spaces. Therefore, a maximum on the taproom is not necessary. Next slide, please. So this criteria is five through seven. Standards five through seven ensure that the project does not adversely affect or is not adversely affected by surrounding development and that the travel to and from the intended project site is safely established. Specifically in relation to criteria number five, staff finds that the proposed amendment should have negligible impact on existing and future land uses. The proposed list of uses is contextually appropriate. In addition to the proposed new uses, staff has placed additional performance standards of approval to provide the city with increased oversight at time of business license application. Next slide, please. The final three criteria ensure that the project may meet any land dedications that may be needed to facilitate its development, that corresponding, a corresponding ODP, which is Official Development Plan, will be able to meet the standards of the PDP, and that the applicant does not have any outstanding obligations to the city. Highlighting criteria number nine, the proposed amendment does not change the existing performance standards established within the original PDP approved in 1983 or any amendments thereto. Next slide, please. Thank you. Staff recommends holding a public hearing to review the proposed PDP amendment and that the City Council approve the amendment based on the finding that this application meets all the standards set forth in Section 11514 of the Westminster Municipal Code. Next slide, please. Staff believes that the proposed PDP amendment, if approved, will facilitate the city's strategic plan goal of creating a vibrant, engaged, and inclusive community by allowing new uses within a commercial center that promote a sense of place with easy access to shopping and employment opportunities. The amendment will also support the city goal of fostering a dynamic and diverse economy by supporting a member of the business community and their efforts to increase their occupancy rates and provide the city with sales tax revenue while maintaining the site's commercial character. So the applicant is with us tonight. That concludes my presentation and they will give a presentation to you next.
I'll open it up to councilmen in a second for questions. Can you give us a report if there was any vote taken by the Planning Commission?
Oh, yes, sir. Planning Commission gave full support of the staff recommendation to provide approval to City Council this evening with a vote of 7-0.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will turn to Mayor Pro Tem's site first.
And I apologize, that comment was actually for a previous item. And so I do not, well, I have one question of staff at this time. Changing the capacity of the taproom does not change the capacity of the brewing that would be going on and therefore would have no impact on our water utility or water consumption. Is that correct?
Now, let me get that answer for you. I was prepared for that. Yes, so the taproom percentage increase is typically based on, I could start where that, I could identify why we established that criteria in the first place. So for a brewery, we typically locate those in industrial areas. And that is because the level of which we've dealt with typical breweries in the city is to be in more of an industrial area. They have higher brewing tanks, very tall, they need tall ceilings, things like that. And there is a reduced parking ratio associated with those types of uses or with industrial properties because it's not a commercial property. You do not need as much parking. So we put the restriction within that definition because they are typically located in those types of land uses, industrial. So bringing this brewery into this commercial area here into this site, we're calling it more of a neighborhood brewery. So it's more of a neighborhood scale. And with that being said, we can also allow to lift that restriction on the 30% taproom size because now we have parking. We're in a commercial center. So it allows for that to be taken up in that area. In the past as well too, there's been, if you remember, the Hofbrot was located in that commercial center as well. That was like one of my first jobs when I was 16. I was a hostess at Hofbrot. But it used to be able to accommodate all of the parking. So and it's overparked 130 spaces. So we feel comfortable with that. And we also put restrictions on how big that the brewery can actually get because we want to keep it at a neighborhood scale. And therefore, it reduces the potential impact that that could have on the water utility portion of it. You know, I definitely had our Public Works and Utility Team review this and they took a look at the amount of brewing that's going to happen based on the different sizes. So the current size that's being proposed and a potential expansion max limitation that we've placed in the PDP. And they are comfortable with the proposal and do not feel that, you know, within the range of size that has been given, that there's going to be an issue at this time.
I appreciate that answer and I also appreciate that you have such deep Westminster roots. I had no idea.
Oh, yeah.
Counselor Bowles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to confirm the Planning Commission vote on this project, but that's already been done. So I'll, I just have a couple of quick questions. Was there any opposition to this proposal from any homeowners in the area who were notified in or homeowners associations? I think there are two or three in this area. Was there any opposition voiced to this project?
No, sir, there was not. We did get some calls asking about, you know, could there be a potential smell impact from a brewery? And if something like that were to occur, we would have them work with the Building Division to find ways to deal with that problem if it were to occur.
Okay.
Otherwise, we did get support. We got a couple of phone calls from some people in the community that, you know, were just excited that a type of, you know, community use such as a neighborhood brewery would be coming into the area. So supporting any, you know, supporting any type of thing that can rejuvenate a commercial center because they live right in the area and we're excited about it. Anyway, half an hour conversation later, talking about that site, we, you know, we left. We hung up and she was happy, so.
Very good. Well, thank you for that answer. Then I, I'm a little, there's one I didn't know what it was. So I'm just going to ask and I have to apologize ahead of time. I just don't know. The applicant is seeking to approve to add permitted uses to the area. And one of them is assembly uses. And I'm not totally, and I have to admit, I should know this, but I don't. What does that entail if that's added to the list of uses for this area, assembly uses? What would that be?
So like as you're, like, what do we define assembly uses to be?
Yeah, right. I don't know. I don't really know what that is. A salt or memo packet. I'm not quite sure what that would include.
Sure, okay. So as we have it defined within the PDP, I'm just going to read it to you that way and then I can expound on that if you would like me to. So it says, "Assembly uses including but not limited to educational facilities, excluding public, private, charter, primary, or secondary educational facilities. Religious institutions, banquet halls are," so those are, that was in, like, the educational facilities is within parentheses. So then we go on to what is allowed and defined as a religious institution or, sorry, as an assembly use. So we have religious institutions, banquet halls, conference centers, and the like are all allowed. But they shall be limited to 20% of the total building area for lots 6A, 5R, and 2. And no more than two assembly uses shall be allowed within this PDP.
Okay, good. That's helpful. Thank you, Ms. Ashman. I just, I read through the packet. I wasn't quite sure exactly what fit in that category. So thank you for that. And then are we working with them ahead of time or what's the timeframe for this project, I guess? You know, will we be working with them for potential expanded outdoor space since we're already doing that for, say, 27 or 28 other similar type of operations? Would we, or businesses, I should say, would we include that in part of this process or is that a step later on?
So as part of this PDP amendment, when you add uses to a PDP, you need to get those uses approved. And then you add those uses to the ODP and that can be done administratively as long as they're approved on the PDP. So we have been working with the property owner and communicating with the neighborhood brewery about their ODP. And the ODP establishes, you know, the specifics of their site in relation to that use, whatever amendments that they had to make. And part of that was adding this use to the ODP. So we've been talking with them. I think we started these conversations though, I mean, this has been, you know, in the hopper for a little while now. It's kind of pre-COVID. And considering now that we're going into the winter, we haven't honestly discussed that yet, but I think that's a great idea and it definitely makes sense. And since we're still working on this with them, I do not see any reason why we wouldn't. So, you know, it's part of us getting this PDP amendment approved and then we'll, we can dive right into that with them afterwards, after we go and start working and getting the PDP wrapped up.
Okay, good. Thank you for that answer. And I know it's a little bit vague because of timing and we don't know exactly what's going to happen in the future. But our staff in Community Development have been so instrumental, so helpful to restaurants and these kind of establishments to have outdoor seating to make up for these statewide health orders. So I think it's crucial. So thank you for, you know, if you will think about that, I think that's something that's important looking into the future, it looks like. So thank you very much. And Ms. Ashman, thanks. Thank you for those answers. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
You're welcome.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only question I have is, this is going into my first review of a PDP that would involve a Fifth Amendment. Is this typical of a PDP process as far as a Fifth Amendment? Is this part of lack of a vision or based on economic conditions? If you could kind of elaborate on that, that would be helpful.
Sure. So PD, there's a lot of, we have various PDPs throughout our city. And sometimes PDPs, amendments to PDPs occur incrementally in the sense that they just want to change something based on whatever that PDP originally established, right? So it could be adding up one land use. It could be clarifying land use. That's what this applicant's doing. It's more so just a way to kind of evolve and adapt with, you know, the current times in some instances even to accommodate new uses, to accommodate, you know, new access points to a site or infill development on a site. So you'll get, you'll see that sort of thing where it's, you get a First Amendment to a Fifth Amendment. And it's just, it's kind of an administrative process in some cases. And in other cases, based on thresholds, we'll take it before council so that you all can weigh in on the decision-making process, especially when it comes to land uses. That's one of the big ones. Or another instance is if we're changing a setback or we're changing a land use intensity or a height on a building. So that's the, or like a height on a building maximum, right, if a new building were to come in. So this sort of thing is, can be typical. And it's, you know, one of the reasons why, you know, bringing this Fifth Amended one before you this evening, there was some changes to the PDP back in 2016 where they added land uses as well. So it's just a matter of making the changes when they're necessary and bringing it before you all to make your decision.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
One of the other things I think we've seen is because of the age of this particular development and there's been a number of changes in ownership since it was originally built, people find that the economic times and also what the customers want changes over a period of time. We've seen a number of use changes in that particular facility or the development, including donut shops. Some of those weren't originally there. So we've had PDP amendments to accommodate how the economy changes. So appreciate it. You made, Ms. Ashman, you made one comment. And I think this is comparable, the tanks that were in the Rock Bottom Brewery. I would imagine the tanks you're talking about here are going to be similar in size and scope, which is already stuff we have examples of sitting in commercial districts today. Would that be correct?
Well, specifically for this, I tried to become just like a smidgen of an expert on microbrewing, but I cannot claim that I am, you know, that great at it. But what I can tell you is that it's based on ceiling height. And so if you recall, in Rock Bottom, they had that really beautiful front area and it was, they could accommodate those tall tanks. In this location, it's definitely a lower ceiling height where they're asking to be located. And so you're not going to see that level of scale. It's definitely shorter. Shorter, smaller tanks, maybe fat, but not the tall ones that you'd seen in Rock Bottom. And I wanted to clarify something as well is that Rock Bottom Brewery was primarily a restaurant use. The difference here with this neighborhood brewery is that they will not be serving food as part of their business operations. And so in other instances in commercial centers, we have allowed for a brewery, a brew pub actually is what we call it, and it has been defined that it is primarily a restaurant and the brewing of beer is secondary to that. And so that was for more of the, it was the commercial character that we were trying to establish as well. And so this is more of just a brewery. It's kind of just looking at it a little bit differently. It's a neighborhood brewery. It's smaller. It's just a different scale. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's fine. And the piece is that this is a PDP. We still have the ODP to go through. And if both of those approved, then they would still have to go to the liquor board.
Yeah, I mean, the ODP is an administrative review. But yeah, the PDP before you and they do have to go, they have to get their liquor license.
Right, okay. Any other comments from counsel or questions before we turn to the applicant? All right, Ms. Ashman, if you'd like to introduce the applicant, we'll have him come forward with his presentation at this time.
Okay, thank you. So our applicant this evening, his name is Sam Brown. He's the owner of the commercial property, Brown and Associates, that helps manage the property as well. So Sam, if you would like to go ahead and get yourself ready on camera with your microphone and Matt, if we can go ahead and put up the applicant's presentation for the evening. Thank you very much.
Oh, there I am.
Good evening, Mr. Brown. If you would, please go ahead and proceed with your presentation.
Next slide, please. So a little brief description of the property. It's actually called Mission Commons Shopping Center. It's about 35 years old, located, as indicated, between 88th and 90th West Avenues on the west side of Wadsworth Parkway. The total center is about 131,000 square feet of retail, major inline tenants, Planet Fitness, Big Five Sporting Goods, America's Best, America, American Freight, which used to be Sears, CB's Wings, Marco's Pizza. Then there's a few pads, major pads are Chase Bank, Burger King, Dunkin' Donuts, and Corona's Mexican Grill. The municipal permitted and disallowed uses have changed over time. As you can imagine, your question about the Fifth Amendment is a good one. But after 35 years, the original permitted uses and desired and prohibited uses have changed and the language has been attempted to be cleared up and cleaned up. Current development plan uses need to be updated. Some of them are outdated, need revision to remain competitive and modernize and provide flexibility and synergism. We have our next slide. Lost y'all here for a moment. So the current ownership, I've owned this for a decade with my children. When we acquired it, the property was in severe district care, needing new roofs, HVACs, asphalt replacement in the parking lot. It's had a high rate of vacancy for years. Currently, there's about 17% vacancy. Pre-pandemic, the average metro Denver was two to three times less than this center. So as you know, if you drive in that stretch of Wadsworth, it's, it's a very competitive area. The big center across the street had huge vacancies when it foreclosures. So this is type of competition we've had there. The proposed revisions to the development plan include brew pub, neighborhood brewery, veterinarian office, veterinary clinic with indoor animal boarding and overnight stays, assembly uses as was discussed. So next slide, please. So this is the north end of the development. And the major tenant there is Planet Fitness. From the very beginning, 35 years ago, it had a, a large fitness center. And if, this is the third one and they've survived the pandemic. Let's put it that way. Next slide, please. This is a center, the middle part of the large building that has Big Five Sporting Goods. Next slide, please. Also in the middle with the center, you can see America's Best and American Freight. American Freight has a huge space. It's about as big as Planet Fitness. And as you know, Sears is a dicey consideration. And we may have to face that issue next year. But they're, they're there for now with a different name. The next slide, please. So this is the west end of the property. This is the smaller building. It's about 11, 12,000 square feet. Next slide, please. In this building, the current tenants are Marcos Pizza, Great Clips, my Brown and Associates and my American Pickleball Association. Next slide, please. If you go back one, please. So I could show you from here. If you see where the, it actually has two red arrow. There, there we go. Where the arrows are, that's where the brew pub will go. So it'll be fixed between Great Clips and Marcos Pizza. By the way, you can be proud of that Marcos Pizza. It is the number one Marcos franchise in the United States. So as Stephanie was mentioning, that this neighborhood brewery will not have a kitchen, will not have food. But fortunately, we have something like five successful food vendors in the shopping center, particularly right next door, a great pizza place. The proposed size of the spaces is 4,310 square feet. And basically that's where it's going to go and it is limited as to where it could expand. So it's not ever going to be a huge industrial facility. It's a retail place for the neighborhood to go and enjoy craft beer. Any questions you might have?
Mr. Brown, is that all of your presentation?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel, does anyone have any questions of Mr. Brown based on his presentation? Mayor Protem, if, hang on just a minute. Let me close this out. Mr. Brown, we don't have any questions for you at this time, but I would ask you please to stand by.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Parker, do we have any public comments in regards to the application before us tonight?
No, Mr. Mayor, we didn't receive any written email comment. We didn't receive any voicemail testimony and no one asked to, to give testimony live.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there any other recommendations by staff? Ms. Ashman?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. There are no other questions from the council and there are no comments from the public. I will go ahead and close the public hearing at this time and open it up for a motion. Mayor Protem Sykes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the Fifth Amendment to the preliminary development plan for the Mission Hill Silo Commercial Subdivision.
Counselor Smith.
Second.
Mr. Demont, you have a question?
I'm no, sir. I withdraw.
All right. Ms. Sykes, do you have a comment?
Yes, I was going to explain the reason for my vote based off of the criteria set forth.
Please go ahead.
Okay. So I have to say thank you to the applicant and thank you to city staff. I think this is a really good example of the flexibility that is intended through the application process to amend our PDPs. I think as the mayor mentioned, being able to have an avenue to adjust allowable uses to meet market demands is critical. And so I think this is a very good proposal that comes before us. So specifically, I will be voting yes tonight because I agree with staff findings that it meets the criteria that's set before us. But specifically, I'm going to point out a few. The first is criteria number one, that the planned unit development zoning and proposal land uses and the associated preliminary development plan are in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan and all other city codes, ordinances and policies. And the, and so other than the exception that we've discussed with changing the taproom capacity, this will be within that use. So, and then in criterion three, that, that exception that's being asked for, criterion three is any exceptions from standard code requirements or limitations are warranted by virtue of design. I apologize, my own notes in the way here. Or special amenities incorporated in the development proposal and are clearly identified in a preliminary development plan. The applicant requesting the exception to the brewery is we have the parking capacity for it, will not have an adverse impact on our water or utility systems. And as discussed, I think just a little bit ago by Mr. Brown, it actually will be complimentary to some of the additional adjacent uses such as Marcos Pizza's, et cetera. So I think that this proposal will help this have a low vacancy rate and allow it to be a viable and vibrant economic driver for the community. So I will be voting yes.
Do you have any other comments by counsel? Seeing no other comments at this time, we have a motion and a second for item B two. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Counsel, or Mayor Protem Sykes.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison.
Yes. Counsel, thank you. The motion passes on a seven oh vote. Mr. Brown, thank you very much for your continued investment in the city. We wish you and your family the best.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the next item, item 10C. This is Counselor's Bill number 32. And then do we have a motion? Mayor Protem Sykes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass Counselors Bill number 32 on first reading, amending Title IV of the Westminster Municipal Code eliminating the sales and use tax exemption for cigarettes.
Counselor Scully.
My second.
I have a motion and a second. There's any discussion or comment? Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to quickly give my reasoning why I will be voting against this changed tar code. I think, you know, we hear a lot about cigarette taxes and, you know, how the, what the outcome is. Often hear that we, we think that it will deter youth. I know I was a youth once and price point was not what stopped me from smoking or kept me from smoking. I mean, I think that youth are the ones who probably are willing to pay more. I think really what this is going to do in a hard economic time is actually really going to hurt certain demographics of residents. And I don't think now's the time to add tax burden on people. And I personally am just principally against what I would consider a sin tax. And I consider the taxes on tobacco to be such. So I will be voting no.
Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, when this first came to council and we discussed it in a study session not too long ago, I voted no at the state level because it was a sin tax. And it didn't seem appropriate to do it at a, at a state level versus a city level. And you know, thinking more about it and researching on it, it doesn't seem appropriate that I would do one and not the other. It just hasn't sat well with me. And again, I just don't think that it's a solid base tax for, including in our city. It can be very volatile. And much to Counselor Demont's point, I too once was a youth and it didn't deter me from any which way on behavior. And I think that this is very trying times for not only our residents, but for small businesses as well. And so I, I don't, while I said yes, my vote will be a no tonight.
Mayor Protem Sykes.
Thank you. I wanted to ask a few questions of the appropriate staff members based off of some of the feedback we've received from the community. The first question, there was, I mentioned the general, who is the representative of NATO, mentioned that there was potential litigation if the city was to uppass this and then still want to get a portion of the state share. Do we share those concerns?
Want to turn to the attorney's office. Ms. Decker or Mr. Tripp, either one?
Mr. Mayor, I think if I may, just to jump ahead here and see if I can address that. This is Larry Door, Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer. And of course, Acting City Attorney Ms. Decker can certainly come in and add additional information. We are not concerned about additional litigation. I think that the caller, if I was hearing that very carefully, I did hear that comment. There's potential, there could be potential litigation against the city, but we, we don't have any pending. We haven't been notified of any claims. I think that this individual is referring to some litigation occurring between City of Aurora and the state related to the City of Aurora claiming that it should receive its 27% share of its cigarette tax to City of Aurora. That's ongoing. I couldn't speculate on what the outcomes might be. But I, I think that is probably, that it could be rather, that the caller was referring to some other potential litigation of impacts that could be present. But again, I couldn't speculate on those. And Ms. Decker, if you have anything to add, or if you, if I may have presented my answer unclearly, would you, would you contribute to that, please?
If I did that right, did I do that right? Yes. The risk in the litigation was weighed, but it was determined that that wouldn't be a very high risk. I think another issue as far as litigation goes was whether or not this was a new tax. And there's a Supreme Court case that our attorney, Matt Munch, felt comfortable that covered us in that action, that it is not, it would not be considered a new tax. So those are the only two issues as far as potential liability that I've seen and we determined were not enough to note before.
Thank you. My second question is not a legal question, but rather asking about case studies. So there had been kind of the, from multiple emails we've received today and then also from comments that we received, there was the question as to whether other communities that have passed this, if they've seen retail sales at establishments that sell cigarettes go down because people are choosing to go to neighboring jurisdictions rather than to purchase cigarettes. Has that been validated in any of the research you did on other communities that have done this? Have they seen net sales tax decreases due to this kind of tax aversion or cost aversion phenomenon that was described?
Thank you for the question. This is Larry Door once again. We have engaged with City of Aurora. They are the only other city in the state of Colorado that has done this. One of the tricks with that is we, the data cannot be known because of course, businesses that collect sales taxes, they file aggregated sales. So it's, it's unknown, for example, King Supers Kroger, they sell cigarettes. And so of course, they file a tax return that's based on all of the sales that occurs at a King Super. So it's, it's difficult to know if those sales changed at King Supers, et cetera. There are obviously other stores that sell primarily cigarettes. But again, they do sell other items. So it's not exactly possible to know. But the anecdotal information that we have gotten is that there was not a noticeable change in sales or consumption patterns or direct impacts to business. And we just have that on a, on a, on an anecdotal basis from City of Aurora. Again, they're the only ones who have done this. We also have the state level. Keep in mind that the state also deleted its own exemption for state sales tax on the, on the sale of cigarettes. Now statewide sales, of course, have been diminishing for a good number of years, but primarily just due to a decrease in overall consumption of cigarettes statewide. So it, again, inconclusive, it can't be determined if the tax created a decrease in sales. And of course, in that case, there's no migration because there aren't a lot of, you know, sales per se in Colorado that would border, you know, a whole, a different state where people could make those purchases. So I would say anecdotally, that has not been proven up. But we, we do not have or could not provide any very clear research and data that would conclusively state that that's led to changes.
Well, thank you. While I do think that there's data that shows that teenagers in particular are price sensitive to cigarettes and it handed her behavior. I, I'm having a hard time with it being compelling that a 22% per pack is going to encourage people to drive to another community to purchase their cigarettes. Can you remind me, Mr. Door, what is the sales tax generation that we think that we might be able to make for the city based off of this change?
Thank you. And Mayor Protem, if I may, I think I heard you say that a 22% change, but I think
No, no, cent.
Cent change. I just want to make sure that's clear to the Cent change, I just want to make sure that's clear to the audience, thank you. It is a twenty-two cent change per, per pack. So the, the city's sales tax rate at three point eight five percent would apply to the purchase cost, the purchase price of a pack of cigarettes, of course, the purchase price varies, but we've done some estimating. We believe that deleting the exemption will create six hundred thousand dollars in sales tax. However, there could potentially be a decrease in the city's cigarette tax receipt based, pending all of that litigation that I described between Aurora and the state. That would be a decrease of two hundred or a net of four hundred, worst case. And yeah, we've, we've got some pretty good information on understanding sales volumes and so forth, but those, that's our, that's our belief for a change in the tax rate.
Okay, well, I find it very difficult not to approve this tonight. We have sales tax on all items that we sell in the city, including groceries. And so I, I'm going to go ahead and vote yes on this, we're also faced with a financial crisis, we have a huge budget shortfall. This seems like an appropriate way for us to secure additional revenues. I do have concerns about small business during this time, but similar to Counselor Demott and Counselor Smith, I don't find twenty-two cents, that level of price sensitivity to really be compelling enough to change the consumer patterns of adults that are time strapped. So I, I just, I guess I don't see enough compelling arguments to vote no.
Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to discuss the reason why we will be voting against this. It, while I agree with Mayor Protem Sights that we do have a retail tax on just about everything else here, is that this will put us at an operational disadvantage. And I think that would have an impact on our small businesses who right now are really hurting. And so it's, it's a, not a primary sales item, I understand that. And, and we do have budget issues that we have to deal with. But I think that we can look at that from an operational standpoint and not put a disadvantage on our, our businesses that in most cases, when we look at our major intersections where, where many of our retail units are, especially right across the street, you can look at another one and not have to go too far out of your way. So I will be voting no on this tonight, thank you.
Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if Kristin, I apologize, could explain that it's not a new tax? I didn't understand that.
Ms. Decker.
Thank you.
Or either one.
Sure. Counselor Scully, I can explain that. Usually if it, because this is already personal tangible property, it's taxable. And so it wouldn't be considered a new tax. In addition, because the increase in revenue would be so de minimis, that it, it's acceptable and it's not considered a new tax under that Supreme Court case.
Okay. All right, I will be voting in favor of this tonight. Mayor Protem Sights summed up most of what I was also feeling, but I agree that we, we tax everything in this city and I, I don't feel that it's driven business away from our city. If, if it does help deter our youth from smoking, I think that's a good thing. I don't think twenty-two cents is going to do that. But for me, it, it comes down to the budget and that we, you know, that could possibly be four hundred to six hundred thousand dollars that we could use to help us pay for things in our city during a time when we also are experiencing shortfalls. I will be voting yes.
Counselor Vols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I guess I have just a quick question about the timing of this resolution. We have a court case pending and there's also, we don't know, I mean, I think Mr. Door just said anecdotally, we know about pricing effect, and I think Mayor Protem Sights made really good points. My question is, if we don't do this tonight, can we do it later? Meaning we see a court case that clears the way and there's not a problem of litigation in the future. And then we have maybe more information on what the actual market bears over in Aurora and what their actual experience is. So I guess my question would be, timing, the timing of this resolution, is it critical to do it now? Or can, or would there be a chance to look at it at a future date?
Thank you, Larry Door again speaking here. Let's see, regarding this litigation, this is a litigation where the city is seeking to collect more money. And so if it does not succeed, then the city would, of Aurora will still be collecting more revenue than otherwise would have with its tax exemption being deleted in place. It's been, this has been ongoing for Aurora for, I think, two years now, and I think the state has had its sales tax deletion, exemption deleted for an even longer period of time. So we expect that that litigation would be ongoing and for a good period of time. Certainly, if it's the pleasure of council, it could be deferred to a later date. But I don't expect that that litigation will be resolved very swiftly, I think it could be drawn out for a bit. And again, it wouldn't, it wouldn't worsen the city's position if it does not succeed, but it could only improve the city's position, so I think that is probably worth considering.
Okay, thank you, that's all I had.
I'll come to you in just a second, Mr. Demott. I think one of the things that may have been confusing was this lawsuit, Aurora is trying to get more of the money the state's keeping. There is nothing from any of the members of the NATO group or any other retailers that are engaged in a lawsuit. This is a dispute between the City of Aurora and the City of Coopers and the state of Colorado, what they're withholding from the city, and the city's trying to increase that amount. So I sort of agree with Mr. Door that this has no bearing on what we're considering here tonight. Counselor Demott.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to clarify two things that I said when I talked about demographics that this is going to affect. Right now, just earlier tonight, we discussed the fact that half of our city, probably a little bit more than half of our city is now going to go back to more serious restrictions. What that means is less tables at a restaurant, less businesses where, where you have a lot of times minimum wage workers. One of the reasons I don't like quote unquote sin taxes is I see them as us taxing people who have an addiction to something. Not everybody who uses tobacco is addicted, but as somebody who was addicted to tobacco, I used to be a pack and a half a day smoker when I was a minimum wage employee. Just to give you an idea what that is, if you smoke a pack and a half a day, that's something like nine dollars a month change. Maybe that's not a lot to some people, but to those folks who are not able to work right now in those service industry jobs, that is an impact to me. So, you know, just a couple different clarifying things that I wanted to point out, when I'm talking about demographics, I'm talking about people who are service industry workers that, you know, right now are struggling to make do. And if they happen to have the, the burden of being addicted to cigarettes, especially in a stressful time, I imagine this is not an easy time to decide, I'm going to stop smoking cigarettes. You know, this is going to impact those folks, and so I just wanted to give clarity around what I was meaning by those statements.
Any other comments from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I would, I would just like to add that what Larry and what you said about the state share back is the issue, not necessarily the litigation, it's whether or not we would get that state share if we did impose this tax. So that was correct, what you stated on the record.
All right, so any other comments from council? I think one of the things that had driven me to where I'm at on this today is the fact that we do have this opportunity to help with the budget to some point. I'm not convinced that a twenty cent or a twenty-five or even a thirty cent increase is going to drive someone to another city. I've seen the emails, I've seen the letters from NATO. I'm somewhat familiar with the lawsuit. This is, again, it's a dispute between the City of Aurora and the state on what Aurora would like to keep on the taxes that are collected in their city. It has nothing to do with the merits of what is proposed to us tonight. But my opinion is I'm still seeing that this is a positive piece for the city, and I'll continue to support it. Ms. Parker, this is item ten C, Council's bill number thirty-two, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Protem Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
No.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
No.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demott. Demott, and I'm sorry, I did not get the audio from you, Counselor Demott, could you please repeat?
Yeah, no.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, counsel, the motion passes on a four-three vote. Moving on to item ten D, before we take this item, there was a quest from Counselor Demott earlier about the possibility of splitting this, and Mr. Door and Ms. Decker, I understand you came up with some sort of a plan on how to address this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I was planning to present a couple options. One option is to vote on the resolution as proposed, stating, stating the position if it's not consistent with the resolution itself after a motion, and second, to approve that resolution. Another option is to make a motion to amend the resolution by removing the state ballot measure amendment B and voting on it by separate resolution. So in that instance, there would be two resolutions. If it's council's desire to split each one independently, then we could have four resolutions.
All right, Mr. Demott, this is your question, so I'll come back to you. You have a couple of options that would hopefully meet your need. I know you had an objection to one of the items contained in the overall motion thirty-eight. Would you be amenable to stating your opposition to the one that you're not supporting? Or do you need to have that one particular one removed and we vote on that one separately? I will leave the option to you.
Looking back at him, there was actually multiple ones that I, I didn't support. So the Gallagher piece I did not support. There was, I believe there was a similar tax increase for cigarettes that was statewide that I did not support. So in the past, when we've had these, we've, we've split them up when we didn't have unanimous support, so.
And I don't have a problem with that, I just need to know if, if the two options you had, looks like you'd like to go to a third option and split them all.
I would prefer.
Correction, there are just three, I, I misstated and I said four.
Okay. All right. What I'm going to do is to honor the request of Counselor Demott so that he can voice his opinion, whether he wants to vote for one or not. So I'm going to try to figure out how best to put this, I'm going to call this off, the resolution thirty-eight A, B, and C.
Did, for the purpose of getting it reported. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, so if there's only three, which three made it on? I apologize that I'm, I'm not following this right. I see the Gallagher amendment, and then I see is Adams County one A and one B, the other two? Okay, so then the cigarette one didn't actually make it into our, our thing. I thought originally there were four people who supported that, and that's not the case.
Was not.
Okay, well, then you could do it in two, because I think I do support one A and one B, I apologize. It's just the Gallagher piece that I don't support.
All right, so we will have thirty-eight A and B, not A, B, and C. And
Mr. Mayor, this is City Clerk Michelle Parker, if you don't mind, just for clarity of the record, what I would recommend, since you have a, you have a resolution thirty-eight and Counselor Demott is simply seeking to remove the first issue regarding to the Gallagher amendment. So I would recommend making a motion to adopt resolution thirty-eight, but striking any language that refers to the Gallagher amendment, and then a secondary motion for a thirty-eight A, which would then split off and be voted upon separately to only include the Gallagher amendment. Does that make sense? And please, Acting City Attorney Decker, if you have a disagreement, please chime in.
I agree with you, Michelle.
All right, I have a proposed maker of the motion, Mayor Protem Sights. You figure out how to make that based on what the city attorneys and the city clerks are recommending.
Yes, but prior to making the motion, I'd like to repeat it back to make sure I don't do it in error as part of the official record. My understanding is that I will make the motion, striking the portion of the motion that references amendment B, the repeal of the Gallagher. At that point, someone will second, will vote on that resolution thirty-eight with that portion stricken, and then someone will, someone or myself will make a motion for thirty-eight A, reading the amendment B repeal the Gallagher ballot language. I counsel position of support on that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, so it sounds like we have an agreement. All right, Mayor Protem Sights, if you'd like to make the motion on item ten D regarding resolution number thirty-eight, please.
Yes, and hopefully I will do this accurately. Okay. I move to adopt resolution number thirty-eight regarding city positions on twenty-twenty state and local ballot measures, striking amendment B, the Gallagher repeal.
And Counselor Scully.
My second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, are there any other comments in regards to this motion? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, if you would, please, a roll call vote for a resolution thirty-eight as stated.
Certainly. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Sights.
Yes.
All right, Mayor Protem, if you would, please state resolution thirty-eight A.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to pass resolution thirty-eight A, taking a council position of support on amendment B, the repeal of the Gallagher amendment, amending the state constitution. The ballot language reads, "Without increasing property tax rates to help preserve funding for local districts that provide fire protection, police, ambulance, hospital, kindergarten, through twelfth grade education and other services, and to avoid automatic mill levy increases, shall there be an amendment to the Colorado Constitution to repeal the requirement that General Assembly periodically change the residential assessment rate in order to maintain statewide proportion of residential property as compared to all other taxable property valued for property tax purposes and repeal non-residential property tax assessment rate of twenty-nine percent."
Ms., Counselor Scully.
I second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second for item thirty-eight A as read by the Mayor Protem. Is there any comments or discussion on item thirty-eight A? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, this is a roll call vote, item ten D, resolution thirty-eight A.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
No.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
No.
Mayor Protem Sights.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Motion passes on a five-two vote. Let's move on to the next item, this is this will be item ten E one. And let me get back to this. Counselor Smith, if you would, please, ten E one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number thirty-nine, authorizing the mayor to Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number thirty-nine, authorizing the mayor to execute the intergovernmental agreement. Establishing the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Community Noise Roundtable.
Counselor Demott.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for a discussion. We'll go to Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a discussion about this in our study session. As a intergovernmental group. That surrounds the. Former Jeffco Airport, Rocky Mountain Regional Airport. And being advocates for our residents as far as noise, we hear. Issues from residents and the flight pattern. And I think this is important for us to be at the table so that we can represent our our residents. Wants, needs, and desires, and also, you know, hear where that economic driver. Needs assistance to, and we can balance the community need and the business community need at the airport. Thank you.
Counselor Scully.
Thank you. I I just wanted to say that I think this is a very important intergovernmental agreement that we are joining. I think we've heard from a lot, from many of our residents for a long time. That on the flight patterns have changed, the noise levels are becoming unbearable, and they would like us to have a voice at the table, and I totally agree. I've always been a little surprised that Westminster did not have a voice at the table. For for the airport. I also live in that. That air route, and so I often hear those planes as well. And understand the complaints of our citizens and and very much in favor of us having a voice at the table, so very excited for this.
Mayor Pro Tem slides.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues, and I can't agree more that I think it is really important for us. Particularly as an elected body to help elevate the voices of our community and amplify them. I've been on council for quite some time now, and. The concerns that I'm hearing from residents in regards to flight sounds, or flight noise, rather, has have really gone up. And so this is an an opportunity to really kind of consolidate and bring these voices together. And I am happy that it will be an elected official that is at the table and an elected alternate. I do believe that we did have someone from our economic development group who has sat. And represented Westminster, and we were very fortunate to have that seat. I know a lot of other communities didn't, but I do know Westminster. Has been dedicated to really making sure our residents' voices are heard. And this is a continuation of that effort, so just thank you to everyone for putting this forward, and I'm happy. I don't know if it's officially been decided, but I know that Counselor Scully volunteered her time and energy because this is an issue she cares a lot about. And has heard a lot about, so. And also Counselor Smith.
Other comments, Council? All right, seeing no other comments, this is item ten E one, resolution number thirty-nine. Ms. Parker, this is a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
And Counselor Scully.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Council. The motion passes on a seven oh vote. Moving to item ten E two. Counselor Smith, would you please make this motion?
Do I read it as is?
Yeah, just read it as it, and we'll we'll talk at the end of the discussion.
Okay, select city council members to serve as both a primary and alternate board members. Or delegate to the city manager's choice, the staff that will serve in these positions.
And Mr. Demott.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of IME two. As the council was alluded to earlier in the discussion that we had last week in a study session. On the need to have people at the table. A decision was made by the council at that time, we would appoint two council members. Counselor Scully as the lead and Counselor Smith as the alternate to that. And they would serve along with a staff member who will be there to support them, very likely the person that was already there. But that will be left up to the city manager. The. Point that we want to make on this is that this is a body that's there to listen. Provide feedback through this roundtable process. But we also wanted to make clear to the public that this is not a decision-making authority, that the decision-making is with the Federal Aviation Administration. But they have asked for these kind of roundtables to provide input, feedback to them so that they can make decisions that are informed about the impacts. To the neighborhoods, and we have heard not only from Westminster, but we've heard from Superior, Louisville. And clear up into Boulder about these flight patterns that are currently disturbing the neighborhoods. So let me catch the comments. I think I've got. Counselor Site, or Mayor Pro Tem sites, I think I've got yours. Go ahead.
That was from previously. I don't have any.
All right, Counselor Scully, are you good?
I I had a comment, sir. I just wanted to say that I am so excited to be a part of this group and to be serving as one of the liaisons to this group. And I'm excited to have Counselor Smith join me and to work together with her. To see if we can help our residents in this particular issue, so thank you, Counselor Smith, for joining me with this.
Counselor Vols.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I had a question earlier, but I think it's already been answered, but my question was, will a staff member? Join Counselor Scully, Counselor Smith? You know, we have that kind of a system with the North Area Transportation Alliance in NADA where we have. Our senior mobility staff person always attend with the either or that the. Council member or ultimate council member. It's a really, really good system, so I'm glad to hear that we will have staff there as well, and. Then I just want to thank Counselor Scully and Counselor Smith for stepping up and agree to do this. It's very important, and this is good work. Thank you.
Counselor Demott.
I just wanted to take a minute and thank both Counselor Scully and Smith for stepping up for this. I know we all have a lot of different assignments, but I. Know that we've also heard a lot about what's going on at the airport, so I appreciate having both of them go advocate for our community.
Any other comments from Council? All right, seeing none, Ms. Parker, this is item ten E two. If you would, please, just a roll call vote.
Certainly. Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Council. Counselors Scully and Smith, we appreciate you, as indicated, stepping into this. Moving on to the item ten E three, this is an authorization for the twenty-twenty-one budget. For the purpose of funding a third-party facilitator for this same issue. Do you have anyone who'd like to make the motion? Mr. Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize thirty-six hundred dollars in the twenty-twenty-one budget as the city shared to retain a third-party facilitator. To assist in the formation and operation of the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Community Noise Roundtable.
Counselor Demott.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item ten E three. Any other comments from Council? Mr. Demott, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reiterate, you know, we've heard a lot about this, so even though we're in a really hard budget time and it's not a lot of money. I think that we're very careful about every penny that we're spending right now. But this is certainly something that all of us, as we've stated before, have heard a lot about, so I think that this is a a good allocation of funds. To address concerns of our residents.
Any other comments from Council? All right, seeing none, Ms. Parker, this is item ten E three, please, roll call.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Item ten E three passes on a seven oh vote. Council, we've had an ask for a very quick, short bio break. And I try never turn those down because I don't want to be put in that situation either. So for the purpose of this, it's eight forty-six. We will take about. Let's try eight fifty-five to be back. That gives you just a little over, a little less than ten minutes. Eight fifty-five, we were convening. We are in recess at this time. All right, Ms. Parker is eight fifty-five. Would you confirm that all council members have returned, please?
Certainly. Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sykes.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour. Counselor Seymour, I seem to have not gotten your audio on that one.
Yes.
Didn't see you, though. Okay, perfect. Counselor Scully.
Yeah.
Counselor Smith.
Present.
And Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Right, Council, let's move on to the next item. This is item ten L. This is a revised employment agreement with the current city manager, Don Tripp. Counselor Bowles.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the mayor to execute a revised employment agreement with Donald M. Tripp for his services as city manager for twenty twenty-one with an effective date of January one, twenty twenty-one, and an automatic renewal for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four unless terminated pursuant to the terms of the agreement. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Sykes.
Back on.
I have a motion in the second. Are there any comments from Council? Counselor Seymour.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I wanted to discuss a reason for my, my vote tonight. I was, I was, uh, primary elected, um, this last November, uh, to bring change, um, that some of our residents wanted to see. And, and one of those changes was a change in direction. And so, um, this, this, uh, evening, I will be, uh, a no vote to continue the contract, uh, with Mr. Tripp. Um, I find him to be an honorable man. Uh, this is more about, uh, direction and policy. Uh, and, um, so that, that is what I believe I was brought here to do, and so I'm going to recognize uh, those residents who, who put me in this place. So, thank you.
Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I too find Mr. Tripp to be an honorable man, but I also find him to be a good manager. Um, Mr. Tripp does exactly what this council directs him to do. He listens to us, he tries to understand us, and then he takes the initiative and moves forward. And so, I recognize that there are residents in our city that are hoping for a different direction, but I think that falls on the council, not on our city manager. Our city manager bids what we tell him to do. I find Mr. Tripp has met and exceeded, in most cases, all of the expectations that were set forth upon him this year. And that if there is disagreement there, then perhaps we need to re-inva- relook at what are the expectations that we have set forth and change them so that he has better direction. I also believe that, and I have witnessed this, and I, and I have to tell you, I was part of that meeting last Friday afternoon, last Friday night. It was a, a quick meeting called, like, within a couple of hours. And, um, there were several of us on the line, and Mr. Tripp was repeatedly called out by our region as a leader, as someone who, um, sets the direction and, and helps our residents and thinks about all sides of the issues. And finally, Mr. Tripp has had an impossible job this year. We, we are sitting in the middle of a pandemic, a one-hundred-year pandemic. And he has turned this city on a dime and made sure that we have had a, a financial budget that we could put into action. He has made sure that we have provided food for residents who didn't have food. Um, he has made sure that if our residents needed rental assistance, he sought that out. He is the one that is leading his team, and they have done all that work. The staff has done all that work, but they have done it because Mr. Tripp has asked them to do it. So I appreciate Mr. Tripp. I, I do think you're doing a good job, and I will be a yes vote for the continuation of your contract.
Thank you, Ms. Scully. Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, looking over the major areas of responsibility, um, that were provided as far as, uh, what would need to be rated on, um, per the contract. Uh, there were several areas where I found it to be below standards, um, and provided examples towards, um, what I thought could change and be, um, improved upon. Uh, and I've done this in multiple areas. Um, there, I would agree, Counselor Scully, um, one of the areas that, um, I did find to be in a positive, uh, light is the, uh, the regional collaboration that Mr. Tripp has provided to Westminster. Um, but overall, uh, the ratings that I provided and the evaluation, uh, needed improvement. Uh, while I, there's a opportu- many opportunities for improvement, um, I will be a no vote this evening. Thank you.
Counselor Demott.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for this, uh, discussion this evening. Um, I agree with Counselor Scully that council does approve the direction, um, and oftentimes gives the direction. But you also have a city manager that, um, often makes recommendations. Uh, one of my disagreements over the last three years is some of the recommendations and all those, although those have been approved by and large, often by the council, um, I still think that the idea of some of the direction is, is part of my disagreement. So, um, although I do place some of, of the disagreement with council, some of it's still about how, um, the city manager wants to run the organization. So I do think, um, you know, I, I thank the city manager for his hard work because I do think that the whole staff included, including Mr. Tripp, work hard. Um, however, I don't agree with the direction of the organization and the growth that we've seen in the organization. Um, from my perspective of, of how I'd like to see things run, so I, as, as well as how I hear from my constituents. So I will be a no vote tonight. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Sykes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna be a yes vote tonight. Um, I, for one, am pretty proud of this organization and what we have accomplished. This year in particular, but that is, um, our accomplishments this year are because we have had a strong foundation over the last multiple years, um, of fiscal stewardship, um, sound and innovative planning, um, and ultimately, um, I, I want to address that a little bit just now. Um, so this year, in addition to a pandemic, um, to, in addition to a financial crisis that was spurred by the, the pandemic, we've had a lot, had a lot of cultural issues, um, as well throughout the nation um, in regards to, um, policing in this country, systemic racism, all of these issues that are tricky. Um, and they're hard, and they're, they, they cause division. Um, even the way you respond to a pandemic has caused division nationally with some people really being remiss, um, or, or, or slow, I guess, to adopt, um, masks or best pa- practices, really skeptical of the science, right? And so you have divided viewpoints. Um, and trying to navigate what is the best possible way to still implement a city's vision and provide core services and figure out a budget that includes, um, really an amazing level of continuity on core services and does not lay off staff or have any forcl- um, furloughs in it is, is remarkable. Um, and we were able to do that because we built, um, our fiscal reserves over the years. Um, we've made really wise decisions. We had some key hires that allowed us to really have, um, a deep dive into what our options were. Um, so I have to say, by and large, I think the city is well-run. Counselor Seymour, um, I don't disagree that you were voted in with people who wanted, um, change. However, I also ran in that election and was re-elected on the vision, um, that m- my council, my, my pred- uh, predecessors and my council had, had put forward. And currently, that vision is still the vision of the majority of council. A city manager does not create policy, and in fact, he just implements. He doesn't have the right to, um, disenfranchise the voters of the majority of council. He is obligated to, um, implement the strategic plan, the visions, uh, uh, of the council. And so it seems, um, to me, not fair to penalize somebody for really following the strategic plan that was given to him by a majority of council. Um, that mandate is, um, his directive. Um, and so I'm gonna be voting yes. Um, I really enjoy having policy conversations with all of you. I do agree that everyone on this council cares about the community and has, um, its best interest in mind. Um, but that is the same spirit I will be using to vote yes tonight.
Counselor Bowles.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll try to be brief. I think, um, a lot of what I was gonna say has already been said, but I, I would just say this staff and our senior staff led by, um, city manager Tripp closed the gap, and I, I wasn't at all sure that that would be done. We closed the budget gap, and it's quite, quite large. And they worked hard to do that. I think that's a gigantic task and quite an accomplishment that I have to say, well done, and to staff and to manager Tripp for, for being a leader of that effort. And part of the reason we're able to do that is because we've had years' worth of financial reserves. Uh, there was foresight and management that led up to this point several years before, which the reserves were built up over time, and now we're reaping the benefit of that. So I, I have to commend again, city manager Tripp and his staffer for thinking ahead and doing that when it happened. So those are a couple of reasons. And then also, I think Mayor Protem Sykes was very eloquent and and made some comments about, you know, we've had issues with policing in our country since the George Floyd incident and some others, and you know, overcoming that has been really tough, and it's a full-time job, and, um, you know, Blue Lives Matter. I know s- city manager Tripp has been extremely supportive of that. So I, um, there are a lot of reasons I will be voting yes tonight, but those are just a few. I do want to say also, though, as we work with someone and we, we all work together, but we have talked about a few ways, how can we improve? What can we do better? And, you know, so we did get a, a three sixty-degree survey, which is a survey of employees, and it tended to be a lot of senior staff, management, division heads, and department leaders, and so it was very positive. It was a very positive. Overall, there were very few negatives in the entire report, and that's what was given to council. That's what we reviewed in, in looking at this, uh, pr- this, um, item tonight. What we did ask for, though, is can we expand that? Can we do, um, quarterly meetings with our staff, meaning our city manager and our city attorney and our, our city judge? Can we up that by meeting with them more regularly? If there are issues that we're concerned about, talk to them not just once a year, but three or four times a year about issues we may have. So I think that's a really strong move. I know we're not all united on this. We're not all unified, but we were unified on what can we do to make the organization better, and what can we do to be the best we can be? And a few things we talked about were meet more regularly with the city manager. If we have questions and, and concerns, we can work with him then, instead of waiting a year from the time it happens. And then also the three sixty-degree survey, which is a survey of employees. We need more. We need more surveys. So if there's any issues with staff and with morale or any concerns amongst our staff, we as city council members have that, uh, information and can act on it and work on it and do the best job we can do. So, uh, you know, we can only do as good as the data we receive. So I think that will be a step in the right direction, and I will be voting yes tonight, and, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Other comments from council? I want to address some of the items that were brought to us by the public. And I want to clear up a couple of things that, uh, apparently people wrote in about. My concern is, we saw a number of verbal comments and emails that came in that talked about a vote of no confidence. And accusations that the city manager is voting on water rates, land use changes, and the lack of direction that they thought he was taking. Let me make it really clear. The city manager does not vote. There are only seven votes, and those are cast by the elected body, the seven members of council. As alluded to by a number of the council members in their comments, the council gets recommendations from staff under the direction of the city manager. Those seven people make the decisions. They are the policy setters. The people that I saw write in was almost a form letter in many instances in regards to this lack of confidence. But yet, when the city manager reached out to those folks, asking him to sit down with him and meet with him to discuss it, almost no one responded. I have very big concerns about form letters that are used to try, try to influence any decision made by council or any other staff member. We act independently as seven voting members, and each one has a voice. When it comes to our annual evaluation of the city manager, the city attorney, or the municipal judge, we each have input. The overall evaluation of the city manager was above meets needs. There were some that said that they had issues with him, and they described what those issues were in their evaluation, and I believe the city manager will attempt to address each of those. We have laid out a plan already for the city manager. If his contract is extended to increase the times that we meet with him so that these kind of issues can be addressed in a more timely manner. But based on the overall evaluation provided by the seven members of this council, there is not, in my opinion, justification for changing the leadership of the city. Each person's had a comment. Each person's had an opportunity to provide feedback in that evaluation. Ms. Parker, this is a roll call. Vote for item ten F.
Counselor Demott.
No.
Mayor Protem Sykes.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
No.
Counselor Scully.
Yes, uh, yes.
Counselor Smith.
No.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison.
Yes. The motion and the contract extension is approved on a four-three vote. Moving to item ten G. Hang on a minute. I gotta let this thing settle down so I can see who's in. I leave, uh, Counselor Demott, you're up. For the motion on ten G.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the mayor to execute revised employment agreement with David R. Frankel for his services as city attorney for twenty twenty-one with effective date of January first, twenty twenty-one, and an automatic renewal for twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four unless terminated pursuant to, to the terms of the agreement.
Mayor Protem Sykes.
Back on.
I have a motion and a second. Comments from, uh, Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, um, will be voting in favor of, uh, extending this, um, employment agreement. As, um, Mr. Frankel, uh, is, is the, uh, uh, his attorney, is leading our, leading our group of attorneys, um, has done an incredible job this year, um, adapting to the changes that, uh, have come, having to deal with multiple counties, multiple health orders. Um, and so, um, I'll, um, be happy to vote yes to extend this, uh, contract.
Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so there are many ways to test leadership, but the true test of a leader is what happens when the leader needs to be absent. And Mr. Frankel's team truly stepped up to the plate, and I, and that is a sign that Mr. Frankel leads an excellent tri- team. He is an excellent leader, and I am very impressed by what this, what his, he and his team have done this year. Um, this, again, has not been an easy year. We have been faced with many, many challenges, um, having to do with national issues as well as local issues. And he has been gentle in guiding us. He has stopped us at times and said, wait a minute, let me give you some guidance. And, and I have just so appreciated that. Um, before, we have stepped in the mud. I appreciate being stopped um, and, and told to rethink something. He never tells us what to do. He just guides us, says, these could be the possible outcomes if you go in this direction. And I appreciate that. Um, he has exceeded all of the criteria set forth in his position this year. Um, his staff is strong. He is strong. Um, and I just, I just appreciate all his work. So I will be voting yes for a renewal of his contract.
Mayor Protem Sykes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I will try to be brief. I do just want to agree with Counselor Seymour and Counselor Scully. I think most people, when they hear City Attorney's Office, they, they think primarily about litigation and liability. Um, but our city attorney's office is so incredibly busy. Um, every land use issue, every contract, um, every public health order, um, is viewed and evaluated. Um, and, and I agree with Counselor Scully. A measure of a leader is often his team, and, um, we have such an exceptional team at the attorney's office, um, all of them consistently adding to the professionalism, um, and the appropriateness, um, of, of how this all of them consistently adding to the professionalism and the appropriateness, um, of of how the city, um, reviews items. Um, so honestly, from land use, um, to to the contracts, um, we couldn't have a better team supporting us. So I am happy to vote yes for this tonight.
Councillor Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to quickly say that it's a a pleasure to be able to have Mr. Frankel on our team. He and his team bring forward, uh, nothing but professionalism and and really calm. We've had some really interesting tense meetings where we have to have, uh, have interaction with our our legal team and they always are very calm, um, very professional. And I appreciate basically just the leadership that he brings to the team and he's just really great to work with. Uh, one of the things that I appreciate the most with his team is they're always looking at ways of improving their areas. For example, the work that they've done with our boards and commissions over the last couple of years to make sure that, uh, we're onboarding those, uh, groups of citizens in a way that they understand the jobs and great legal ramifications of the decisions that they make as well as they do that for us. So I am excited to continue, um, to work with Mr. Frankel.
Councillor Bowles.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I'll be very brief. I I'll agree with all of my colleagues who've already spoken. You know, this year we've had emergency orders, multiple county health orders. And I agree with what councillor Mott just said, the the, um, onboarding with, uh, boards and commission members and making sure we're doing anything legally and on the up and up, and that's happened. So I really, that work with boards and commissions has been tremendous. So thank you for that. And we, he has put together a team of absolute, um, top-notch professionals in the city attorney's office. So I thank him for that. I think the attorneys who work with him for all the work they do. And he's always very generous with his time with me and that's, that's very much appreciated as well. So I will be voting yes tonight. Thank you.
And councillor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I don't have much more to add. My colleagues have done a very good job as far as describing, uh, why we would continue the contract with Mr. Frankel. Um, I know that he's out, uh, today. Um, so thank you for Ms. Decker for stepping in. And that's just the true, another true testament to, uh, his team stepping up. So, uh, I just wanted to, uh, say that and say that I will be voting yes on this contract tonight.
Okay. Thank you, council, for the all kind comments. I know that, uh, Mr. Frankel would appreciate it if he were here listening. So I'm not saying he's not listening.
Mr. Mayor, you can be assured I'm already relaying your messages and I know he appreciates that and I do too. So thank you.
Okay. But to add to that, not only has, uh, Dave done extraordinary job with the situations we've been in this year, but, uh, I want to also add that congratulations to the staff. Mr. Munch, uh, has been dealing with this COVID issue and a number of other issues, especially that have been outside of what we normally deal with. And these health orders is coming in. Uh, Ms. Decker and the rest of the team have stepped up. Mr. Betts over with our PD with the new bill and all the things going on there. But I don't want to leave anybody else. Everybody in that office, regardless of their position, has stepped up this year to an infamal amount of work that we don't typically see. And to all of you, we express our gratitude and how much we work. And we appreciate not only Dave's leadership, but the leadership you've all shown, uh, when he's not been able to be here with us. So thank you all very much. Ms. Parker, I think we have an ability to call a roll, uh, for a roll call vote on item ten G, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Sykes.
Yes.
Councillor Seymour.
Yes.
Councillor Scully.
Yes.
Councillor Smith.
Yes.
Councillor Bowles.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
And councillor Demott.
Yes.
Well, Mr. Frankel, you squeaked by on a seven oh vote. So congratulations and thank you for your service. Council, we're going to move on to item ten H. This is our update on our COVID report. Mr. Trip, you and your team are up.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we have four items on the report tonight. Uh, Max Kirschbaum will lead us off with the data update. And then, uh, we we have, uh, some enforcement, uh, requests coming from Tri-County Health. The mayor, I'll be asking you to help with that. And then, uh, communications Greg Moss and, uh, finishing up with Jenny Grafton on long-term recovery. So Max, if you'd kick it off, please, and then we'll just go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trip. Thank you, uh, council and good evening. This evening, uh, Matt, if you'll bring up the slides, I have one slide again to show, uh, following the same format as last week, no change in the format. Uh, I will point out that all of this data is as of Friday, the twenty-third of October. And where appropriate, I will add a couple of, uh, data points from today because they they're they're significant to what you see on the chart. Just one other caveat. I said all of this data is as of the twenty-third. There is one exception to that. If you'll note, in the Adams County column, we've shaded that the tan color indicating level three. Uh, I thought that would be appropriate to do for you this evening, given that the, uh, uh, the order for Adams County will become effective on at five P M. On the twenty-eighth, moving Adams County from level two to level three. Besides that, all the data that you see here, uh, numerically is as of last Friday, the twenty-third. So looking at the state column, uh, the other thing you'll notice in all of the boxes is every trend arrow is in the upward direction. Uh, nothing is moving negative. And in fact, uh, I I have heard, uh, a, at least one media report today that would indicate at a state level, Colorado has now jumped to one of the, um, highest rate of change states in the United States. Uh, that, uh, so looking at the state column, two hundred and forty-five is the number of cases per one hundred thousand over the last fourteen days. And if you look at that number as of today, I checked, uh, we checked on these late in the the workday today. That number has now grown to two hundred and ninety-nine. And the positivity rate, uh, listed at just over six percent here on the slide has also changed up to seven point seven percent. That is a, that is a very large change in a, uh, a a ratio, uh, over just a three-day period. So very significant change. On the Adams County column, looking there, uh, the the number four hundred and thirty-six being the cases per one hundred thousand per a two-week period as of last Friday has grown today to five hundred and forty-five. They will list a second number if you subtract out congregate facilities like prison, college, long-term care. That that rate would be, if you subtract that out, would be lower at at just about five hundred. So either way, whether you include the congregate facilities or not, it's, uh, now over five hundred in in just a matter of another couple of days. And that takes the positivity rate shown here at nine point eight percent up to over ten percent today. You'll notice if you look at the the metrics, uh, legend on the far right side, ten percent is one of those barrier numbers for movement between levels as well. So it was just under ten percent, uh, with the data as shown. It now goes over ten percent with the data today. Though those do support the 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 decision that has been taken to move uh, to level three, which is, uh, still within the safer-at-home band of the dial, but it is at the highest level now. Uh, the Westminster data, I do not have, it's very difficult to translate all that data to the Westminster data on the run, on the fly, you know, late in the day on a Monday. But as of Friday, you see the breakdown there that, um, similar to the two counties themselves, uh, there's a ratio of about uh, two to one on, uh, the, uh, cases per one hundred thousand on the Adams County side versus the Jefferson County side of Westminster City data. Uh, hospital admissions are are moving in the upward direction. To put that number one hundred and six into a little different context, the, uh, as of today, the number of hospitalized uh, across the state is a little over five hundred total. So a little over five hundred total is the highest number since, uh, early in the pandemic stage. But still, still, um, well below the, what the state said, uh, would be an ICU bed capacity of of eighteen hundred across the state. I won't comment on, there are a variety of projections about, uh, what could happen with ICU bed capacity. Um, I'll leave that to others to uh, offer opinion on where that's headed, but the the numbers are continuing to move up in a very uh, steady fashion, even in hospitalizations. Um, that's all the information I have today unless there are any questions. And if there are no questions, uh, I'll, I'll kind of.
Yeah, I've got one here.
I'm sorry.
I'm trying to make sure that I've got everybody. I think it's councillor Demott. So.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Kirschbaum, for the presentation. Um, I'm just curious on, so the public understands as well as council. And I know that we're going in the wrong direction at a at a rate that, um, isn't great. Um, but just so people understand, so they're moving in tomorrow or Wednesday into the next phase for Adams County. Then at what point do they reevaluate that to say that they need to, um, take either more severe restrictions or potentially ease up? Can you just give us an idea of that that timeline of how that works?
I'll I'll give you my thought. Uh, the mayor and and Mr. Trip could also comment as they have sat in on the same sessions that I I listen into, uh, at the Adams County level. But I I I would say, um, it's safe to say that it's under continuous scrutiny. And, um, no, there there is, the way this was set up, the for the dial to work, it was set up for, uh, mitigation plans to be approved, implemented, and, um, if you will, a grace period to see what should happen. In this case, it, just moving to level three, it looks like the the, uh, grace period was truncated, uh, just because of the rapid rise in the case data. I'm not sure that that would would happen again on another move up or down the scale, but that that's what happened in this particular case. So I think it's fair to say that it's probably under continuous scrutiny.
Okay, so there's no set defined, you know, two weeks before they they remeasure or anything like that?
I I would say that was probably more rule of thumb that, uh, it would allow time to develop a plan, approve a plan, and then see what happens. It's just in this case that that, uh, the the case data was changing so fast. I think it it influenced the decision to make the make the move to level three.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Scully.
Uh, yes, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, um, Mr. Kirschbaum for this report. I think I was watching the same, um, media show right before the meeting. Um, and it, the numbers did not look good. Um, so so I just want clarity. So for moving into a new level, we have to meet one of these stages, but to move out, like to move down back into like a level two, we would have to meet three of the phases. We'd have to show that we had mitigated three of the phases. Is that correct?
Um, that's.
So I can read.
So they developed and presented the dial is yes, the, these are, that's why they're the focus of this slide. These are the three metrics that are specifically considered in that change in the dial position. So you you would, one would think that, um, in order to either move up or down, each of these, each of these three metrics, according to the legend on the right side, would be met.
Okay. So so basically, it's just really important that we continue to be diligent. And I know that that's just so hard. I know that we're all tired, um, that we all want our lives back. And and I think that what you're showing here is that, uh, this is not a sprint. This is a marathon. And, um, I know there are quite a few of us on council who have actually run marathons. And we know that, um, the hardest part of a marathon is actually mile twenty. When you only have a little bit left to go and yet you're just so tired and you just want to quit. But we've just got to keep going. Um, we are, we we've got a little bit of a bump here, but as a a community, we do so well. I understand that we are at ninety-five percent wearing masks. That's tremendous. As a community, Westminster is doing awesome that way. But we've got to stick together as a community and we got to keep working toward this. We can get through this and we can get through it and not kill our economy. We can get through it and make sure that not too many, hopefully praise God, that not too many people die. You know, working together, Westminster is known for how we work together. I mean, that is our greatest strength. So we've just got to pull together and, um, keep working at this. We've got this, but don't give up yet. Thank you, Mr. Kirschbaum, for your report.
Councillor Seymour.
And, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Kirschbaum. Uh, this may, this may come further down in the discussion, but, um, considering the the variables on how we're going to implement this, we are one city, but as I mentioned in my comments, we have, we have uniquenesses that we can take advantage of. You know, the the city numbers, and yes, I know both of those brackets have gone up, but using those that are on there. I mean, Jefferson County has, you know, uh, Adams County is ninety percent higher incident rate than than Jefferson County right now. And, um, are we giving considerations to, um, allow each county then their own variances as far as, especially from the business gathering? And if we're going to get into that later, then I'll I'll defer that.
Let me, let me try to. Councillor Seymour, we we are, we are and have been following county by county regulations. And I, and it's our intent to do that without direction otherwise from this council. We wouldn't want to penalize a part of our community that had the ability to function and operate. And I know that's going to be, that can be a bit confusing for folks, but we're trying to maximize our options.
Thank you, Mr. Trip.
Right. Mr. Trip, if you will, I'm going to go ahead and jump in at this point and try to catch up some of the stuff that's been happening today.
Right. Can I provide a little foundation of this, Mr. Mayor? Thank you. So last week, Dr. Douglas came and spoke to us. And he mentioned during his presentation a concern about enforcement on the Tri-County side. And, uh, he asked for assistance and support. We've, I've heard that from my colleagues, um, in Adams County, from the county manager. And the mayor apparently has heard the same thing. So a few days ago, the mayor alerted me to to an I G A. That is happening between Adams County and Tri-County, for Adams County to provide some support on enforcement. We have some concerns about getting involved in this, but the fact of the matter is Tri-County does not have staff to do this. And so we're taking a look at what's happening in Adams County to see if there's a way that, um, we could do something similar. And I would tell you, it's all in spirit, completely and totally in the spirit of. And I would tell you, it's all in spirit, completely and totally in the spirit of regionalism, and trying to work together to keep these numbers down so we can keep our businesses open, we can continue to function in this economy, and we don't fill up uh hospital beds and uh not have people be able to be cared for. That's completely the reason that we would do it. But we're also going to provide a lot of respect um to people's individual liberties, and uh, I, and I believe what we, whatever we bring back to you will be, will not be an overreach for local government, but we'll be in support of those principles. So I wanted to let you know that we're work, we're working on that, and we, we would plan to come back to you next week. And it's your, uh, it's for you to vote on, and it's for all of you, all seven of you, to decide that you're satisfied um with what we recommend. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to do that.
All right, so let me go back a little bit for catching up some of the, for this thing, because as, as Dawn has indicated, this thing is changing by the hour. We have, just a little over two weeks ago, the county and tri-county received an approval of the mitigation plan that we were going to work on. With that approval from the state, also came some added pieces. And there were about three of them, which we discussed here a couple of weeks ago. Right after that, we saw another big surge of COVID numbers. That was about a week later, and the, and the state informed tri-county and the county that they were going to do what they had said the week before they didn't think they would be doing, and jumping over. That is back on the table, that if the rate of inflation of these numbers continues, they will consider jumping over one category into the next highest category. They haven't done it yet, but it is back on the table that they will consider that, depending upon the rate of inflation of these numbers. Last Friday, when we looked at the statewide pieces, there were four counties in the state that were in the 350-plus range on the infection rate. On Monday, today, there are seven. So we have seen three more counties over the weekend go to the red state. To give you an example, Sedgwick County, their infection rate is 1,121.6, with a positivity rate of 11.5. Logan County is 807.7 with an infection rate of 5.1 positivity rate. Washington County, 421.8 positivity 9. Yuma County, 516.7 with a 10.1. Summit County, 448.6 with 9.2, and Powers County with 536.2 and a 10.9. Adams County at 10 o'clock this morning, when I pulled the number prior to the meeting with the chamber, was 490.1 with a positivity rate of 10. Jefferson County at the same time was 247.6 with a 5.7. 6:30 tonight, I repulled the numbers. Adams County went from 490 to 547.6 in less than 12 hours. Positivity rate went up from 10 to 10.2. In that same time period, Jefferson County went from 247.6 to 282.1. And their positivity rate went from 5.7 to 5.9. My discussion with the chair of the Jefferson County Commissioners late this afternoon is that they are moving with their health department to immediately put together a mitigation plan. Chair of the commission is uh Leslie Dollkiper, and Commissioner Dollkiper has indicated to me that they intend to follow the plan that was submitted by Adams County, which received state approval, understanding that they'll probably get the same additions. Their rate is going up just like Adams is, but not at the same rate. But at 282, we are into level three, if you follow that number. By the state, they have still been classified as level two, but a mitigation plan is in the process of being formed and sent over. At the 547 number for Adams County, we are definitely in the area of staying home, but we still have the opportunity to try to bring this number down. Typically, what we have done is received a two-week period from the state to see the turnaround. In the periods of times that we've been trying to get these turnarounds done, we have not been able to see any reduction or flattening of numbers in either county. We have seen nothing but a continuous rise. But when we see a jump from 490 to 547 in less than 12 hours, we've got a problem. As the city manager pointed out in our conversation with uh tri-county as late as Friday, we have an enforcement problem. And it continues to primarily be in the same two categories that we've talked about for several weeks, in small and large gatherings, not necessarily within our, our business community. It doesn't mean that our business community doesn't have any, but it's not anywhere near the rates that we have seen. As I told this staff, the uh group on the phone call this morning, IGAs were signed between Adams County and tri-county that the county is moving all of their code enforcement division over to support tri-county health and trying to investigate and react to complaints that are being received about these gatherings. They have asked, we said we will consider them, but not until we see what you're talking about and what your requests are. I asked the county and the tri-county health department to send that proposed IGA to our city attorney's office. Ms. Decker has uh been in communication with the attorney for tri-county. They will be presenting something for us to look at and consider, hopefully next week. We have not committed to doing this, but we are looking at how do we help to prevent us getting into that final stage of stay at home? I think we are all in the same agreement. We do not want our city shut down, regardless of which side of the line you're on, because if it goes in one side, it's probably coming shortly behind any other, because the rate of inclined is still there. I think it behooves us to look very clearly at what is going to be proposed next week, once that's been determined. And then we have a very open discussion at the study session next week of how do we help turn this around? This is going to be an astronomical impact to our city financially, from not only from our revenue, from our city, our businesses, the people who live here and who work here, if we don't get this thing under control. As uh Max said earlier, Colorado is now becoming one of the biggest hotspots in the United States for infections. Our ICU numbers are somewhat misleading when we talk about how many people are in the bed. I can't tell you that all the numbers that are in beds are nothing but COVID-related. As I indicated to the chamber this morning, we still have other people who are going to ICU for other health issues, whether it's the flu, it's heart, cancer, whatever, we still have people there that are tying up those ICU beds. That's not going to stop. People are still going to have serious health issues. But we have got to find a way to try to help not only ourselves, but our neighbors as well, because remember, we fall under the county. The county does not designate us out, nor do they give a variance from the state on one city over the county. We're under that one control. Our misfortune right now is that we have two different ones competing with who's going to get what numbers. But I think we will see in the next couple of days, uh, based upon what the commissioner told me this afternoon, that they will also be submitting a mitigation plan. And I don't see that it's going to be a lot different than what Adams County submitted. How long it takes the state to turn that around, I expect probably within a matter of a couple of days because of the urgency of getting this mitigation plan in, in place. We will, as we did with Adams County, get a chance for having staff to look at that and respond back. If it's that close to Adams County, I think we'll have probably some of the same comments. Uh, for the most part, uh, Mr. Tripp, I think they listened very carefully to the comments that the staff made along with our city attorneys. Whatever we can do, we have got to help turn these numbers around. Be patient, let the staff work through this proposed IGA that will be to you in your packet on Wednesday. I hope, if it's not, it will come out as a special piece as soon as the attorneys and staff get a chance to look at it. As of this morning, I don't believe Ms. Decker hadn't received that, I think she was waiting on that. And the last time correspondents I heard was probably around midday, still waiting on the tri-county health to send over a proposed IGA. I think part of it is they were waiting on the county to release their piece of that. If, very big word right now, if we make a decision to authorize anybody to support this in an enforcement area, in my opinion, it should only be on a voluntary basis. In other words, we don't require anybody to do it. My conversation with the county and tri-county last week was, there are CARES dollars available at the county level that should be able to help pay the municipalities who can find people willing to go help with this enforcement. I will not support the city having to give up any of their CARES dollars to do this. We have made a commitment to the dollars that we have, they've been committed to our business groups, to our support groups, and to our employees. But we all know that there is kept money in both counties that can still be used for this kind of an action. We just have to find a way to have people help do it. There's going to be a lot more of this to come. There is no indication that we have found a way to slow this thing down. The state and the county monitor this on a daily basis, as some of you have asked. I don't see anything in the immediate future that says that we've found a way to get people to all of a sudden comply and start doing what they need to be doing. I anticipate these numbers are going to go up as they have over the last two weeks, especially in bigger jumps like we saw today. This city and our business and our community can't afford a lockdown. But it looks like that we are doing everything we can to get there faster than what I was hoping it was coming. I had anticipated we'd probably hit 500 by the latter part of the week, but we jumped way beyond 500 this morning, or actually this afternoon. We will be back with something from the staff as quickly as that can get put together for us all as a group to look at, to digest and to make our recommendations, but we need to get the document in front of us before we start making decisions. And I don't want to make any decisions of without having the details in front of us. Uh, Mr. Demont, I think you had a comment, and then Mayor Protem sites.
Hmm, I do have a couple of comments. Um, I appreciate the fact that we're going in the wrong direction. But you know, this, this year has been anything but definite. Um, I think that a lot of mitigation plans that we've tried throughout time have been anything but definite in, in whether it's going to be successful or not, quite frankly. Uh, we've heard from the WHO in the last couple of weeks that they feel now lockdowns potentially don't work. Um, so I'm, I'm concerned about what I'm hearing, I'm concerned about people's liberty, I'm concerned about us having the idea that people should be turning in their neighbors um in their own homes. I, I have serious concerns about that. Uh, we were elected to represent people, not to tell them how to live their lives. So I very much have big concern about what I'm hearing. Um, I think I, you know, I addressed this last week, I will continue to advocate for people's rights. Um, we've also seen some changes in the courts, and it, you know, we'll see how it flushes out, but at this point, we've been having churches closed for six months. One of the fundamentalist uh freedoms that people have in this country is the freedom to practice their religion. We've not allowed people to do that almost in the entirety of a year. And now the courts are saying, potentially, we shouldn't be able to do that. So I have some very big concerns about us um continuing to limit people's freedoms. I'm concerned about the virus. Um, but not to the point where we need to treat people like they're prisoners in their own homes, nor that somehow their, their rights are forfeited in this country. So I, I do have big concerns about what I'm hearing. Um, obviously, I'm going to look at the details and see what they put in front of us. Um, but no, our, our businesses can't, can continue this way. Neither can our residents for their own mental health, well-being, their, their freedoms, as, as well as is the right to be able to earn a living.
Mayor Protem sites.
Mayor, you answered one of my questions, which was, was the contract tracing still indicating that this was from small gatherings rather um than schools or businesses? And I want to make sure I heard you accurately, is that still the case?
The two biggest bars from the counties both still indicate the same thing, that is, the small and large gatherings outside of businesses. But don't misinterpret, it does not mean that the others are not contributing, but the two biggest uh pieces of where we're seeing the biggest numbers of these infections are from those two areas. And both Adams and Jefferson County both agreed that's, that's still the truth today.
Um, well, definitely, these are sobering numbers, and um I, I think I share the concern of all of my colleagues that this um has the potential to be detrimental to our businesses, um to our workers, to our residents um in, in multiple ways. Um, I, I, it, it's disappointing that with all we've tried to do um to adjust our lifestyles, um to, to limit exposure, um and contracting the virus, that it persists. Um, I recognize the fatigue, I feel the fatigue myself. Um, I'm curious if there is an IGA um on building awareness. Um, so I, perhaps I'm wrong, but I think it's outside of our bubble that gets invited to these calls. I don't believe there is general knowledge in the community of how bad we are spiking um in Adams County, or that um Jefferson County is heel, heating up on our heels. Um, and I'm wondering if there is an effort to make um that message more ubiquitous, to empower our residents to understand that really um the choice is theirs, our, our behaviors. Um, we can willingly work together to fight this virus, or um we, we can have more draconian measures taken, and I don't, I don't want to see that either. I would much prefer um that we get a handle on this. Um, I think that that's appropriate. So I'm hoping that communication and education is part of the way we're looking at coordinating with some of these other government, government partners. Um, when I was on that call on Friday, one of the things that I think multiple members of my, my council have mentioned is that they heard that Westminster was really a leader on some of these communication outlets. Um, but I really, I think we all need to push it further. Um, and I, I would love to see if there's an IGA on, on, again, that.
Both tri-county and Adams County government itself, is they're using Eric platforms like we are to push information out from the websites and stuff. But you have to get people to do more than just look at the websites, pay attention. I know we sent out emails, we've been sending out robo-calls. To that level, I can't answer how far down it's gone. But we do know that based upon multiple conversations, they're trying to do everything through a communication avenue that we're doing. But you got people, get people to buy into it and to abide by it. There are still, I believe, pockets that believe that uh they're immune, they won't get it. They're healthy. That's not necessarily true. But the thing is that we, we are not seeing compliance in two key areas based upon what both county health departments are reporting. And those are our two biggest numbers. How do we get them to abide by it? I don't know.
Yeah, um, I just, I guess what I was hoping, and, and it sounds like maybe from what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, it is, but rather than just enforcement, right, um punitive enforcement, um awareness, I, I would hope those CARES dollars could go to promote awareness and maybe vehicles beyond our own websites, because most residents never go to our websites, right? They're going to see an ad, um, you know, maybe as a pop-up on their Facebook, or they're going to hear something on the radio, but not, I mean, as much as we think people love local government, they don't typically visit our website, you know, on, in their daily life. So I'm just, I'm hoping that we can look at ways to expand our reach. Um, that said, I think it's really important that we're speaking with one voice and taking this virus seriously and asking people to follow best practices. And asking people to follow best practices every chance we get and not minimizing um the, the. The, the financial implications should be enough to, to just let's try to do our best to, to slow the spread. So. Um, thank you guys. And yeah, definitely troubling information.
Counselor Seymour.
I just want to talk about some good news with our residents. Um, this is not my usual numbers, but I, I, I want to talk about the fact that. Uh, Westminster residents in Adams County um haven't have a, a little different incident versus some of our neighbors. Uh, for instance, uh, the last number that I saw. Thornton has a hundred and thirty-three percent higher incident rate than we do. Similar in Commerce City. So I think our residents are getting the message. Um, we can come up with all the plans in the world, but we have to deal with the fact that Adams County is a unique and very large county, as is Jefferson County. And uh, quite honestly, um, every place I turn, every page I turn to, every media that I'm on. Has something about this. So I, I don't think it's that. I think, I think um. This, this is the evolving nature of this and we do know for a fact that it has ticked up. One of the lagging indicators that Dr. Douglas and I spoke of last week has ticked up too. Um, hospital, total hospital beds used by COVID patients is at six percent right now. So. That is up from four point four percent. So we do know, we do know that number too. So. Um, we still have plenty of, of beds available and we have emergencies. We don't want to use those. I agree. We need to show leadership in that. But I don't think that, um, I, I think we should celebrate Westminster residents. For the results that they have. Um, that's what's going to be frustrating about this is that uh we are leading, our residents are leading. Um, our, our numbers in the city, the Adams County side are significantly uh better than our other cities. So I want to congratulate our residents on, on working towards that too.
Counselor Demont.
I wanted to follow up the Mayor Protem sites comment. I do feel that this council has been very unified in. The fact that we are recommending people make wise choices with washing your hands, not making choices that you don't need to make to keep yourself and your loved ones safe. So I do feel although there's disagreement about some things, I think that we've been pretty unified as a council as far as those sort of education components to our residents.
Is not unanimous to have a mask requirement in this.
But unanimous in recommending it. There's a difference between force and recommendation. So I think everybody's been on board with saying. It's a wise choice. Make wise choices.
I recall a question if they were even, there was even efficacy. So no, I don't agree. We've all been in agreement.
All right, guys, we will see something hopefully next Monday. Between Mr. Tripp and staff and city attorney's office, uh, as fast as you can get something put to us that makes sense. Get it to us, even if it's not in the Wednesday packet, it has to come later because we're going to need to get through this discussion on Monday of next week.
Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of areas left. Comment on communications, the answer to that's yes, that's primary. And uh, Greg Moss is going to talk about that in a second, and then we're going to talk about long-term recovery issue with Jenny Grafton, but because. I know that all of you understand, as I do, that it's not the direction of this city to be. Um, asking neighbors to report each other and to go into people's homes and to try to do some enforcement that jeopardizes people's liberties. And if you'll recall, I said that in my comments. I just want to make sure that anybody who's listening knows that is not what we're talking about doing here. This is a very volatile subject and it would not be good for people to leave this call tonight thinking that we're going to enter. And engage in some sort of a enforcement practice that, that does that. Um, that is not our intention whatsoever. Our intention. Is to do it in a manner that can educate people and can uh make sure everybody understands. What these rules are and what needs to be done. So I know you all know that, but just to make sure everybody on the call knows, that's not the direction we're going to be taking here. And uh, the, the, the details will be in the IGA that you receive here uh in a, in a couple of days. So Greg Moss, could you come on right now and just give a brief summary of what our communication plan looks like moving forward, particularly in light of uh. You know, this, all these issues that we're um that are expediting right now.
I, I will, and thank you, Mr. Tripp. Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council, thank you for indulging me for just a couple of minutes here. Uh, Matt, if you wouldn't mind loading up the slide deck. Uh, Greg Moss filling in for ICD manager Ryan Hegrenis. And we want to take a look at uh just a real quick overview of the communication strategy for moving to level three safer at home. Um, Ryan and the team have been working on this since Saturday. Uh, next slide, Matt, if you don't mind. Uh, basically we have a challenge statement in front of us. Um, modeling, we have decided to model ourselves after the Step Up Colorado campaign. Uh, that the governor just launched officially on Friday of last week. Uh, the goal here is to ensure that our residents continue to understand the importance of following what they've been doing a great job of. Uh, the public health guidelines. Um, of course, we've got some more consequences facing us right now if we don't follow those. Uh, we fully recognize the delicate balance here. There's a lot of fear, frustration, confusion and anger. Uh, frankly, um, based on some of the monitoring that we've done with social media, but. We will continue to be diligent to remind folks about this and focusing on what's in our control. Uh, next slide, uh, we've got uh three phases that we want to talk to you about. Thank you, Matt. Phase one has already begun. Uh, we are notifying the community of immediate impacts, uh, focusing on the target audiences of residents, businesses and city facilities. So the residents. Uh, we have done more of a broad approach right now. We'll be narrowing that focus down. Uh, we've done a lot of outreach to businesses, um, more focused. Uh, Jenny Grafton is going to explain more about what we're doing one-on-one with those um businesses here in just a minute. And of course you got some information today uh from us about the impact on city facilities. Uh, we do have staff standing by. Have you got any specific questions on that? That communication uh will be going out uh tomorrow to the general public. We of course want to continue to work with Adams and Jefferson County and the leadership there to support the alignment of these policies. We are, as you all well know. In a pretty unique situation and, and balancing both what is Adams and what's Jefferson and where are we? And how do we um support and educate uh people on, on what is expected? Uh, that will continue through at least November third as we get some more clarity. We've got a phase two. Of amplifying that step up campaign that I mentioned. We are working directly uh with the creative agency that worked with the governor's office on that. And we've got some meetings with them, uh, Rich Newman does with um that team uh in the next couple of days. And then we have a holiday. A supportive campaign that'll be launching here. Uh, obviously we've got some holidays um that we need to address and help support people through that. The next couple of slides, Matt, if you want to just roll through those pretty quick, um, this is just a sample of the creative that we are working uh with. Uh, the Step Up Colorado campaign, as you can see, it is a more positive message of stepping up to keep our economy moving forward. Uh, to make sure we can all get back to the things that we love. And uh, the next um slide and the last one I have is the key messages, uh, which is this common ground. We, we all want what's best for ourselves, our families and our community. Uh, let's recognize that. We've done this before. Uh, we are continuing to do it. Uh, and then the obvious a, action steps that we've been um reminding people of for many months now. Uh, we do recognize the fatigue. Uh, we recognize the need to get this out and, and continue to get it out in concerted ways. Uh, we also recognize this is just one tool in the toolbox. More tools in the toolbox are supporting our businesses directly. And Jenny, I, I'm going to invite you onto the call right now. Uh, to talk more about what we're doing with direct outreach to businesses and some more of the support that.
Thank you, Greg and low mayor and, and council. Let Matt pull up the next slides um for this portion. But um, just wanted to start by saying, of course, that council receives the long-term recovery reports that we put out on Thursday. Uh, so I'm happy to answer any questions about that if, if council has them tonight, but really just going to take this opportunity to highlight a few key pieces. Of that long-term recovery work. So um, following on, on Greg's heels here, many of you are familiar with the Market Night Food Box program that he helped to launch. We didn't have those numbers um yet from last Wednesday night when the report went out Thursday morning. But important to know that all six hundred boxes that were prepared were distributed. With the first four hundred and eighty-five going out in twenty-two minutes. So uh, certainly a program where we're responding to a lot of community need. Um, our Westy Rise Winter Business Grant, which this represents the third in our series of business assistance grants. Um, this one is not restricted to restaurants. Um, council recall this one is, is broader in scope. That has seen tremendous response and currently we have that program on pause. It looks um certainly like the demand that we have in the queue will exceed the five hundred thousand allocated. Certainly not a surprise, um, given, given the news. We are working to evaluate additional assistance needs at this time. In light of the changing circumstances. Um, Chase Evans is the one really leading that effort, but uh we are going to be. Re-initiating those care calls that were made early on in the pandemic back in April. Um, council will recall that Stephanie Trawler and, and many volunteers um from across the organization. Stepped up to make a significant number of calls to our businesses, roughly over three thousand businesses in Westminster. So we will resume that activity as a way not only to provide information and connect with those businesses. But also to hear what sort of assistance is most impactful for them at this time. And allow that to help guide policy decisions um for additional assistance dollars. I also want to note that the rent and mortgage assistance programs um that have been stood up through the two housing authorities with CARES funds. Um, the one with foothills regional housing for Jefferson County continues um unabated. However, the one with maker for Adams County has been on pause. They have expended the Westminster portion of CARES funds. They are also um moving through a lot of the funds put in by other municipalities. So. We will be working to evaluate whether there are additional CARES funds that can go into that program. In the meantime, they are still serving as a resource for applicants that contact them. Redirecting people to um available resources through the state. Right now there is rent and mortgage assistance um coming from the Department of Local Affairs. We estimate that just sort of based on the capacity to process requests, if we were able to secure additional funding there. They could process about another three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand um to Westminster residents. Uh, between now and the end of the year with CARES funds. And on that note, I would like to shift over, actually have Matt back up one slide. Um, wanted to provide counsel with some information that doesn't go out in those long-term reports, um, but I know it's certainly been an item of interest. So just last week, Governor Polis issued executive order two-two-seven. This was on the heels of the CDC guidelines for eviction moratoriums, so specific to Colorado. This bans evictions for tenants experiencing financial hardship due to COVID nineteen if they meet certain criteria. Those criteria, which will be on the next slide in a moment, were the ones established by the CDC. Important for council to note, if, if you're receiving questions um from constituents. The very big part of this is that there is a waiver that must be completed and filed. Those waivers are available broadly. Um, we have a link to it on our website. Through the housing authorities, also through the Department of Local Affairs and in numerous other places. We are certainly encouraging anybody who has received an eviction notice. Or any other sort of communication from their landlord to that effect. That they reach out to Colorado Legal Services so that they don't miss those steps necessary to provide protection for them. There is also executive order two-two-three signed the previous week. This is the one that bans the late fees. Um, it also has a few other components to it requiring landlords to give thirty days' notice to tenants. Again, this is specific to evictions for non-payment. It does not apply to evictions for serious threats to property. Or serious threats to safety, any of what are considered substantial breaches in lease terms. And of course, in all of this, it is still important to recognize that it doesn't relieve a tenant of their obligations for paying rent. It's merely a suspension on the eviction process. We recognize that, of course, this puts many landlords in a difficult situation because they still have their, their mortgages due in many cases. So again, we want to continue to support programs that enable people to make payments, even if they are partial. Um, to provide that continuous stream of income for landlords. Council will also recall that the two programs we stood up did have a landlord application track and that was extremely successful. So with additional funding, we would continue to provide support through that mechanism as well. Next slide, please. So these are the um criteria established by the CDC, what it means to qualify under financial hardship due to COVID nineteen. There are income limitations, which you may have heard, um, for an individual that is less than ninety-nine thousand for the year. Or a combined household income of a hundred ninety-eight thousand. Uh, also, let's see. Critical that someone is continuing to try to make payments to the best effort that they can. And they need to document that they would be rendered homeless or forced into move into some sort of close quarters that would compromise. Health concerns around COVID nineteen if they were to experience eviction. So. Colorado Legal Services, as well as the Housing Authorities, are very happy to provide guidance and direction for tenants in filling out those waivers. So that if they have questions about these points, they have someone knowledgeable that can answer those. So with that, I'm going to close this portion and, and I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Any comments from council? Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Greg, thank you also for yours. All right, Mr. Tripp, we have uh those two items. In the other part that was contained in the uh email that came out this morning, I did have a question on a clarification. In regard to the. Walnut Creek and Legacy Ridge Restaurants. I want to make sure I'm not misinterpreting that. And I'm going back to the safer home level three order. That restaurants are to reduce to twenty-five percent of capacity or fifty people. The fifty is still what's allowed under the fifty percent or fifty people under level two. Reducing capacity but still allowing up to fifty people in restaurants or is the statement that's in the email. Consistent with what is in the material that we received from Tri-County. Over the week, oh, and Friday and from the county as well. If it's different, then please explain why.
Jason, Jason, uh, come on and uh handle that, please.
Thank you, uh, mayor and uh council. Jason Gang, Director Parks, Recreation and Libraries. Uh, no, the uh. The restaurant operations in our golf operations are consistent with the uh limits of uh operating restaurants. Uh, based on Adams County and we will, uh, of course, uh, follow Adams County guidelines. Uh, for uh Legacy Ridge and Jefferson County guidelines for Walnut Creek.
Okay, it just the way it was written, I had some question as to whether or not we were being more critical of those two restaurants than we were of other restaurants in the city. And I wanted to make sure that everybody stayed on an even playing field. They all need every bit of business they can get and I don't want to penalize any of them, but I appreciate the uh clarification that we are staying with what's in the order. And not making it more restrictive uh on the city side. Mr. Tripp, do you have anything else on the COVID report for tonight? Don, we can't hear you.
I apologize very much. We have a WEDA meeting next and then uh we, we have a post-meeting. That was uh to, to discuss in final form the rules, regulations, code of conduct. Given the time, that could certainly be deferred until uh study session next week, but we would like to get this city council exec session. Uh, that's scheduled for this evening done, so. I'll just turn it back to you, mayor, and you folks can decide if you want to do all three or two of the three.
All right, council, it's uh currently ten fifteen. As the city manager indicated, we still have the WEDA board to go through. Is there anybody who objects to us postponing the post-meeting item for the council rules till Monday? And include that as part of our study session on Monday night? And I'm not hearing anybody. And I'm not hearing anybody. Some cameras are on, and for some reason, I can't see all the council's cameras tonight. Counselor Smith, you had a comment?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we in fact having a meeting? Because I know staff was looking at not having a meeting on the week of election. So I was just curious if we...
Yeah, we did not. We did not get a majority to say that they wanted to defer that meeting.
Okay. I was just asking. I never got a final answer, so.
That's fine. Thank you for the clarification. All right. So we'll move the post-meeting item to next week. At this point, we are finished with all business in front of the city council, with the exception of the executive session, which we'll come back to. I will adjourn the city council meeting. It's now 10:16. We will reconvene at this point as the Westminster Economic Development Authority, the roll call from the city council meeting previously will stand. And at this point, we are open for a motion for the minutes. Board Member Demott.
Thank you, Chairman. I moved that the board approved the minutes of October 12, 2020, meeting of the Westminster Economic Development Authority as presented.
All right, and we'll stand by for a moment. We lost Board Member Seymour. And Mr. Vols, I will presume you're there because I can't see you. There we go. I got you back. Ms. Parker, are you able to contact Mr. Seymour?
I'm up on audio. I'm having camera issues, though.
All right. Are you okay to continue, Mr. Seymour?
Yes, I am. There's my camera now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. I have a motion for the approval of the minutes. And trying to think where we're at here. Mayor Protem Sykes, would you do the second? Vice Chair Sykes, can you do the second, please?
I think she's frozen.
Yeah, looks like it. Stand by while we got to get the connection back to. There we go. Okay. Now we think we got you all back. All right. I have a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes. All those in favor, please signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing the motion is carried. Moving on to Item 3A1. On this item, Board Member Scully, I think you're up.
Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chairman. I move to authorize the Westminster Economic Development Authority Executive Director to enter into a one-year sole source agreement with the Laramie Company LLC to provide consultant services regarding the development of the downtown Westminster project.
And Board Member Vols?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I second the motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the sole source contract for the Laramie Company under Item 10A1. Are there any comments or questions from any member of the board?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just really quickly, I think it was in our package. I just want to confirm. Do they have regular intervals where they come and report to the WEDA board?
Staff does. The consultants only come when requested.
If it be your pleasure that you'd rather, you'd like to have some report outs during the course of the year, we can certainly arrange that, Counselor Vols. But it has been handled by economic development staff. I, so I guess my personal preference would be, I would like to see them in front of us at least once a year. You know, I would like to seek out of the flavor of what they're doing, what they, how they're handling things, what they think. So, yeah, I don't know if anyone else in the council agrees, but I would like to see them kind of show up and be in front of us and answer questions at least once. Do any of my colleagues agree? Or am I on an island on that one?
Got a couple of little big comments. Mr. Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I'm on, I'll concur with Counselor Vols on that thought. I understand the value of a contract of this scope to help drive business, and the expertise at the Laramie Company is well-known. I do personally have a concern about where we're going in the years to come on this. Being new to council, adapting to this contract gives me some concerns. I'd rather have a contract like this further on the commission side rather than the guaranteed side. And I think we would drive more business that way, too. I understand these are complicated issues and negotiations, but I find usually get better results when you have a higher commission and less fixed cost on this, too. So that's my comments for this one.
Mayor Protem, I'm sorry, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. I did want to say I agree with Counselor Vols, having been the beneficiary of meetings where the Laramie Company did present. I think they do help you understand the value proposition that they bring to the table. I do understand Counselor Seymour's, or I'm sorry, Member Seymour's desire to want to maybe look at the economics of the contract. I have been in his exact same mindset structure that we inherited prior from a previous council. And I have to tell you, my skepticism has been overcome due to the level of buy-in that this group has. And also, I think there is a benefit in it not just being commission-based, in that they're willing to say no when it's not the right fit for this project, when it's not in alignment with the vision. You know, this has been an investment of city resources, and I don't really like to tinker in the market unless you're looking to achieve a vision that needs a little assistance. And that had been the case with this. And so I do want to have that vision discipline with our consultants. So I am going to support it tonight. I really like Counselor Vols' idea. I think that would be great for everyone. And I just want to say, I do, I really do understand where Counselor Seymour has, is coming from and have been...
Information that Counselor Vol, or Chairman Vols was talking about to be more...
I think Mr. Vols is recommending that they come here and meet with us, not just have staff present the statuses of the projects going forward. I don't think that has anything to do with the current, the approval or disapproval of contract tonight. And I don't see that there's any issue with asking staff to not only bring them periodically, but make sure they're part of the conversation with council in the future.
Okay. Because I'm also hesitant to move forward, just to hear all sides of the contract. So I was wondering if that was a possibility, but...
I think that was really the purpose of the executive session last week was to go through that. And hopefully, we had answered everyone's questions last week.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other comments from any member of the board? Ms. Parker, if you would, please.
Chairperson Atchison.
Yes.
Board Member Demott.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sykes.
Yes.
Board Member Seymour.
Yes.
Board Member Scully.
Yes.
Board Member Smith.
Yes.
And Board Member Vols.
Yes.
Thank you, board. Moving to the next item on here is Item 3A2. And Board Member Scully, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to authorize the Westminster Economic Development Authority Executive Director to enter into a one-year sole source brokerage agreement with the Laramie Company LLC for brokerage services for the downtown Westminster project.
Mr. Vols?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. So any discussion by any member of the board? Make sure I'm not missing anybody. Board Vice Chair Sykes, do you have a comment? Nope? Okay.
No, I was just going to do the motion. Sorry.
Okay. All right. No comments. Then we will move to a roll call vote for Item 3A2. Ms. Parker.
Board Member Demott.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sykes.
Yes.
Board Member Seymour.
Yes.
Board Member Scully.
Yes.
Board Member Smith.
Yes.
Board Member Vols.
Yes.
And Chairperson Atchison.
Absolutely, yes. And the motion passes on a seven-all vote. There being no other business before the board tonight, we will adjourn. It is now 10:27. Based on the fact we only have one other piece we're going to try to conduct tonight, and that's the executive session, Mr. Tripp, I'm going to ask you if you can give me any idea of how long you think this session may take before we adjourn out of public session.
Well, these things are always based on questions from you folks. I would tell you that I think our presentation piece can be kept to 10 or 12 minutes. And I'd ask the staff to do that, and then it's a matter of questions after that. But I think it's going to, I think it can happen within a half an hour and probably meet all your needs.
All right. Thanks. Ms. Decker, I will ask you to lead us in here in just a moment. And counsel, I'm going to anticipate that we will go into an executive session probably within the next 10 minutes, that our time limit, it will be up at 11:00 PM. And I'm going to ask that we will, as we go into the executive session, go ahead and make note that we will continue the executive session until it's finished, and then we will mark the time. In the event that it goes past 11:00 PM, we'll conclude that in the closing comments of the executive session, as we have done in the past, when we don't know how long discussions will go. Ms. Decker, I would ask you to read us into the part of the executive session, please.
Mr. Mayor, we have a request for an executive session to discuss the possible sale of city-owned real property interests located at the southwest corner of West 92nd Avenue and Lowell Boulevard, and instruct negotiators as authorized by Westminster Municipal Code Section 1113C2 and Colorado Revised Statute Sections 2464024A and E1.
Counsel, you have heard a request from the city attorney's office to enter into an executive session for the items discussed. At this point, I will ask each member of council to confirm verbally that they are prepared to go into an executive session, that upon the agreement to enter in the executive session, we will exit out of this meeting. You will go to the new link and pick up your passwords and enter into the new meeting as quickly as possible. Starting with Counselor Scully.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protem Sykes.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
There as well. It is now 10:29. We will exit out of here. We are adjourned, and I'm going to ask you to move as quickly as possible into the executive session. Thank you to the public. Everyone, have a good evening.